Called to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have eleven members present in the room, eleven members and civic clerk, and one member excused.
All right. Thank you, Clerk. Please now rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Brunet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of our Constitution, the Constitution of the Constitution, and the Constitution of the United States.
Alder Brunet.
Thank you. Lord, we are meeting tonight to conduct matters of city business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. We also pray that you place your hand of protection on all of our employees, especially those in difficult or dangerous positions, like police officers, firefighters, paramedics, public work employees, and forestry employees. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Alder. And to approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the minutes from the June 27, 2023, meeting and the July 24, 2023, meeting that was seconded by Alder Eck. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda.
So move.
Motion to move Q3 after appointments, or J, sorry.
Alder Grant makes a motion to amend the agenda to place Q3 immediately following K, seconded by Alder Brunet. Any discussion? Alder Galvin?
If there's no discussion, I have another item I'd like to have moved.
Okay.
Under O, item six, massage establishments, if we could move that to the end of the agenda. I was contacted, and apparently some of them have hours that go late, and so they're hoping to have some time to be able to make this meeting.
Okay. Very good. We'll dispense with the First Amendment first and then move on to that one. But we have a motion to amend, and it was seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. And then Alder Galvin, your motion to amend.
Second.
My motion is to take item O six and move it to the end of the agenda.
All right. Alder Galvin makes that motion to amend the agenda and place O six at the bottom of the agenda. That was seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. Just one question, I guess, before we take that vote. For Attorney Bunger, he's placing this after the ordinance. Is that an issue at all?
That is an issue.
Okay. Sounds good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that amendment is approved. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda as amended. It was seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved as amended. Report by the mayor, just a couple of quick items. We had Art Fest, Green Bay, the first of its kind this past weekend, and so just wanted to acknowledge all the volunteers and folks from City Hall who made that event such a success. Downtown Green Bay did a fantastic job pulling all of that together. You know, so appreciative to all the artists and the musicians and everyone who had a hand in making that a great weekend for a lot of folks. Also wanting to acknowledge the neighborhood associations who are putting on the National Nights Out, which we every year conflict with, unfortunately, with our meetings. And so next year, I'll make sure that that is not the case, so that we can all enjoy them. But we did have a couple that I and a few Alders were able to hit before coming over here, so Alder Scannell, Alder Stoyer over at Mather Heights, and then also at Navarino. I know we have a couple others that are going to be attended by our police officers. So very grateful to all of our neighborhood associations who have made that a priority to make that an event where all can feel welcome and enjoy. So that's it for my report. On to announcements from the council. Alder Scannell.
Yes, I wish to wish, Magic Vang, the best of luck and success. I found out that there is a football league, European-style soccer, called the Kanifa Asia Cup. That is for groups who don't have a nation, such as the Hmong, or the Tibetans, or certain others. And our own local Magic Vang is playing for the Hmong teams on the fourth, six o'clock. So I wish them all the best of luck, and go, team, go.
All right. Very good. Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just piggybacking on what the mayor said, that there is an event going on, and actually at Mather Heights. It goes from five till nine, and they have a number of bands there tonight. So if we get done early, we can all go over there. No? Yes. Also, on a little personal note, this Thursday, from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Lion's Mouth Bookstore, I'll be giving a poetry reading. So Alder Scannell, I would appreciate if you don't bring any fruit or vegetables there.
They're not going to be there already?
That'll be Thursday, from 5:30 to 6:30. So that's it.
Very cool. Congratulations. Any other? Alder Galvin?
Thursday. I want to thank the Park and Rec Department for the job they've done this year, getting lifeguards for all three of our pools. But in addition, I had the pleasure this morning of accompanying my daughter and her family to the Resh Aquatic Center for Tiny Tots morning. This is a time of day that they carve out of the pool hours where it's just small children are allowed. And I'm telling you, my grandson and granddaughter had a hoot until I took my granddaughter down the big slide, and they went downhill from there. But other than that, it was a lot of fun, and it was neat to see how many families were there with, I mean, absolute infant children in their arms, and being able to take part of this thing that we have going in our city. So thank you very much.
Yep. Well said. Thanks, Alder Galvin. Any others? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to National Night Out, there's also Kitty Carnival, which is going on tonight, and that also always seems to land on a council meeting. I popped over there for a little bit and would have loved to have stayed. They always do a great job with that, so maybe we can also look at scattering those out a little bit more. Thanks.
Good point. Any others? All right. Seeing none, we'll move along to recognitions and awards. We have one this evening, a very bittersweet one for us here at City Hall in the City of Green Bay, and it is a recognition of David Hanson, City of Green Bay traffic engineer on his almost twenty years of service to the city. So he served, I think, a big chunk of that time as our traffic engineer, done a really great job working with members of the public, as well as Alders and city administration on some pretty complex issues, from no parking to, you know, traffic impact analyses and everything in between, a lot of work with our state DOT on projects, big and small. And just really want to thank you, Dave, for your service to the city, all the great work that you've done for us as a community. I know you're moving on to some, to a really exciting position in the City of Madison, so we wish you all the luck with that. But just really wanted to acknowledge the great work that you've done for all of us and wish you the best down in Madison. And as a small token of our appreciation, I'll give you a Green Bay city flag to wrap yourself in whenever you're feeling homesick. So there you go.
Thank you so much.
Alder Weary for some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sure Dave would like to speak too, but you could always count on Dave if you needed an opinion on something or some information for a constituent, that you'd get paragraphs and paragraphs and paragraphs and maps and links and lots of well-researched data. So I always appreciated that. You had great customer service. So thank you, Dave.
Absolutely. Alder Stoyer?
I'll piggybacking on what Alder Weary said. I've known Dave for quite a few years, and he's, many a time, I'd say, hey, Dave, can we go over to Shawno and Oneida and check this out, or Military? And he would come with, check things out, talk to me up and down, and I don't always, we don't always agree, but very thorough, and he loved music too, as I do, and a lot of us do. So we interspersed talking about music, but also traffic cones and traffic lights. But I appreciate everything he's done for the city, and we will miss him, but we'll stay in touch somehow.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alder. Alder Brunet?
Yeah, thank you. Dave, I'm going to miss you as well. I've served with you for a while, and I always appreciate how level-headed you were. It's difficult, because as aldermen and alderwomen, we'd love stop signs in every corner of our district. And you told us that that's not practical and it's not wise, and you always did it in a very professional way that kind of led me to understand the wisdom of your field, which you've spent a lot of times to be an expert in. And then on a more serious level, just when we look at Green Bay and some of the fatalities we've had, traffic-related, and the speeding and inattentive driving, I think that you have probably, and we can't quantify this, of course, but you probably saved a lot of lives and serious injuries in this city through your actions and through your hard work. And so I think that that needs to be recognized, that for a while, nineteen years, as long as you've been here, Green Bay's had one of the best traffic engineers in the state, in my opinion. So thank you for that.
Any others? All right. Thanks again, Dave. Really appreciate everything. Any words for us?
It is on now? Okay. I have nothing prepared, actually. I just want to just, I'll just speak from the heart, and got to be honest, this has been one heck of a ride over the last seventeen and a half years. I have enjoyed working with each and every one of you. I know I've worked extensively with some that have been, obviously, in their positions much longer, and I'm not just talking elected officials, I'm talking staff as well. This city has one of the best staff that I've ever worked with, and I've worked in the private industry as well. So I can definitely say, truly from the heart, that this city, I think everyone really cares. We have a lot of challenges behind us. I think we've certainly got some challenges ahead of us. And I guess, just on some parting words, just always remember, we are in the people business, people. We really are. My job is, people always think it's black and white. It's, there's a lot of gray with traffic engineering. And, but at the end of the day, we're here to serve people and to improve the quality of life of this city. So never forget that, and treat everyone like you want to be treated. I've always kind of used that as a philosophy, that I don't care who you are. And I think people have recognized that, that you can pretty much ask me anything, and I'll give you a straight answer. I won't be mean. And yeah, it's been a pleasure, and I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss this city. I've got some huge challenges ahead of me in the City of Madison. I'm glad that they entrust me, and I'm very honored that you entrusted me with your traffic signals, with your street lighting, with all of the analyses when it comes down to the developments that have occurred in this city. University Festival Foods, one of the biggest ones, and biggest challenges that we had took a long time, but we figured it out, and overall, it worked out well, as many other projects. So I guess with that, thank you very much. Love this city, always will, and this will always be my home. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks again. Now on to appointments. Entertain a motion on reappointments?
Motion to approve.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the reappointments, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and those reappointments are made. On to the new appointments. Alder Stevens makes a motion to approve the new appointment, was seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that new appointment is confirmed. On to item Q3. And that is, to approve a conditional use permit at 310 Van Castor Drive to construct a two-family dwelling, semi-detached in a low-density residential zoning district, subject to the following conditions, et cetera. Is there a motion to open the floor?
Motion to open the floor.
Alder Grant makes a motion to open the floor. That was seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the floor is open. So I've got a few here. I will read them, and just as a reminder, members of the public have three minutes to address the council. First one I have here is Randall Frailing at 324 Van Castor Drive. Yes, if you'd just like to approach the podium? And then just state your name and your address for us.
Good afternoon. My name is Randall Frailing. I reside at 324 Van Castor Drive with my wife. We have been there almost four years. Our property at 324 is directly adjacent to the property that they're talking about at 310 Van Castor Drive. They're proposing these, a set of duplexes right next door. The first question I come up with is that they only have one address on here as 310. So is it going to be 310 and a half, or is it going to be 310 A and B? I think Green Bay has probably moved on from that, as we have had half addresses around the city, but that was many, many years ago. So that's one question I have. The property we'll be living in? Kind of a build, I guess it's going to be a duplex. It's going to be a two-story duplex. At the meeting we had with the property committee, Community Economic Development Department, the meeting that we had, they showed us on the projector that it was going to be a two-story duplex, and they gave us some renderings of what it might look like to the north and to the south, but we were wondering how this rendering was going to be towards our place directly, which is to the north. So we'd like to know more about how that information's going to be and what it's going to look like. We're concerned about our security. We're concerned about our property value. We're concerned about the wildlife. In that property and on our property, there are some oak trees that are 150 to 200 years old. We would hate to see this property get disrupted. And if there's more than, if there's one duplex goes in, does that mean that there's going to be more and more and more? We'd like to know what the future is for this area. We have grown to appreciate the peace and quiet, the fabulous wildlife we have there. We have deer and turkeys and many, many birds that we take care of. And also, again, like I said, we're concerned about our property values. We'd like to know, if this goes through, when will the building start, when it will be finished, and how long will the property be disrupted? That's if it goes through. Is it only a choice of a duplex, or can there be a standalone condo or a single-family dwelling? Right now, it's zoned for R1, which I believe is a single-family dwelling. And why do we have to have a duplex? Why is it a duplex? The other thing that we would like to request, if this goes through, that there be a six-foot privacy fence from across our property line to that property at 310. That's one thing that I'm requesting. So we have some concerns.
Sir, your three minutes have expired?
Okay. I hope I've given you some insight on it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thanks for your testimony. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Next, we have Kenneth Stowe.
My name is Kenneth Stowe. I've lived in the area for forty-nine, fifty years. We're the oldest living residents on that street, Van Castor Drive and that area. In the past year and a half, we've had two shootings at the end of the street and the duplexes. We've had a ton of garbage at another sighting on that street around the duplexes, and we also heard that the owners of the duplexes don't even live in this area. We are totally against it. We, I and my wife, have collected a number of signatures, and almost everybody in the area is totally against the rezoning of this property to have more duplexes. We have enough right now, and all it is, is trash. I estimate, being in real estate and building myself, that our property values will go down at least a hundred thousand. Can you take that kind of hit on your property when you're taking care of it? No, you can't. And a lot of that is for retirement. So I wish that you would look at the security issues and everything else that these duplexes bring into the area. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Next, we have Mary Stowe.
I have two big concerns. The first being safety. The shootings on Van Castor Drive that have been recent, and when you have more duplexes, you have more transient people, people who do not care about the value of their property. We have another example at 431 Van Castor Drive, a duplex that is just loaded with junk. And the people who own that property do not even live in Green Bay. And when you collect junk, it just makes property values go down. So those are my two big concerns, safety and property values.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Uh, next we have Ben Vanderkinter.
Good evening. Um, I served, I, I, excuse me, I'm Ben Vanderkinter. I live at 3035 Brook Park Drive, which is two houses down from this property. Um, I've served on Baird Creek Neighborhood Association for seven years as treasurer. I've lived in the neighborhood since ninety-seven. I bought my house in ninety-seven, so twenty-five years, if I do the math right. Um, great neighborhood. Uh, there are duplexes and a number of, oh, excuse me, apartments. Uh, that's our, our neighborhood. It's comprised of that. For the most part, a lot of them are very well-maintained and operated. Uh, that's great. Uh, we wanna limit the ability to just keep rezoning properties. Um, I'm all for progress. I get it. Um, when I moved in, when I bought my house, the field across the street was completely empty. It's now developed, and that's great. I mean, it brings in more people, uh, more neighbors, things like that. But we wanna make sure that it's done tastefully. With rezoning this property, uh, it leaves it open to interpretation, that it could be condos. I know it says multifamily. I did not attend to the planning meeting, um, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what it would entail, but it, it leaves it open for a lot of, uh, possibilities. I also know this property's been listed several times over the years, and maybe, uh, people are just trying to cash in and get, get it sold. I, I don't know. But I just want you to reconsider that, uh, it's a very quiet street, Brook Park Drive, which is the corner where this property is. Um, it's a thoroughfare for walking, dogs, people walk to the end of the road. It's a, it's a beautiful neighborhood. So, just want you to reconsider, or to consider, uh, the rezoning as, as, uh, other people have mentioned. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, thanks for your testimony. And we do have another one here, not wanting to speak, but in favor of the, the rezoning. Is anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? If so, just approach the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Allison Buckley. I'm here on behalf of Verdoux Homes. We're the applicant for this property. Um, I think there's some mix of information. Um, what we came to you with is, we are frequently approached with, um, homebuyers that are looking for something that's somewhat economical, they wanna control their destiny. Um, a lot of buyers are losing out on bidding wars on houses, and so they keep trying and trying and overpaying and not really finding anything. Um, it's a subcontractor of ours. They're brothers, they're young families. Um, we typically try to look for an infill lot such as this because it becomes more economical, and also by doing it as a duplex, they're able to share the cost of the lot and further make it more economical. I'm just to clarify, building a new house is not affordable, uh, but we're doing what we can to make it as economical as possible, and also allow them an opportunity to do some sweat equity. Um, total investment in the property afterwards is about six hundred thousand dollars. Um, again, it's owner-occupied on both sides, so I don't think we have some of the same issues that are being referred to in the rest of the neighborhood. Um, also, uh, this family has other family nearby. They're currently staying, um, around the corner with family, um, because they're preparing to try and move into their next, their next home. So, but happy to answer any other questions anybody would have.
Great. Thanks for your testimony. Any questions? Uh, yes, Alder Morgan.
So, is this like a twiddle mini setup?
It's not technically a condo. Uh, when we talked to planning, we asked if we should subdivide the lot and make it two lots that were narrow with like a zero, uh, zero lot line, um, or we could do it as a duplex. We would build it and construct it such that in the future, it could be separated in terms of fire code and what construction types need to be done. Uh, but it is allowed for it to be a conditional use permit, so it's just recommended that this would be the route we would go.
Is it set up to be owner-occupied both sides?
Correct.
Need to be free?
Correct.
Any other questions? Alder Campbell.
So, it's upper, lower, twindle?
It's a side-by-side. Um, they're both about eighteen hundred square feet, three bedrooms.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, Alder Burnett.
Thank you. Um, you've spoken before, counsel before, right?
Been here a few times before.
Okay, I thought so.
About ten years or so.
Trying to place you. Okay, um, one of, and I'm not trying to get into a he-said, she-said, but one of the speakers had mentioned that duplex would, could derogue property values by a hundred thousand dollars. In your experience, you've developed a lot of property, you've been involved in a lot of real estate. Is that true? I mean-
I, I have not seen it. I mean, I'm, well, particularly when it's owner-occupied, but you have new investment into that neighborhood. If anything else, I would say that it, it's growing the value in that, that it's not an inexpensive, um, adventure, obviously. And it's a nice, stable neighborhood. That's why we, we chose that, and they're trying to raise a family in that. Um, and they're trying to be part of that community.
So, when this is constructed, if it's constructed, if the CUP is granted, what would you anticipate the mortgage on the property to be, or the rental cost be for the person who lives there?
Uh, well, they'll, they'll have their own mortgage. Um, I have not specifically act, like, I know what the building costs are. It's up to them to whether they put cash down plus their mortgage, so I don't have that breakdown. I just know, building cost-wise, um, will be probably in about over excess of like three hundred on both, both halves, if you will, for a total of six hundred thousand dollar investment. And that's what would be used for the assessed value in terms of what's conveyed to them from a cost standpoint.
So, a rather sizable, I'm assuming it will be a bank loan or finance, is a very large payment, given the cost of the issue.
Well, depending on their investment, correct?
Okay, thank you.
The other questions? Alder Campbell?
Just clarification on the three different now things. So, both units will be for sale for a mortgage, so they will, will have joint care of the neighborhood because they own it, or they're rented.
We will convey each half to each individual owner would be our, our goal through that, that each side would be owner-occupied. We have buyers on both sides. We are not building it for a rental, or it's specifically for two customers that happen to be brothers.
On conventional mortgages?
Correct.
At today's market? I mean-
Correct, yeah, yes.
Okay.
There, there are small business owners in Green Bay. Um, they've worked, worked for us for years, and we're just trying to help them out and get them a new home. That's what we do. We don't build rentals. We're not in the rental business.
I guess my concern is, you have a whole neighborhood here, and it's all these families versus two other families. So-
I understand that, but they're, they're also trying to build and be part of a neighborhood, and that's hard, hard to do. There shouldn't be held against them what's happening in other parts of the street.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Any other testimony? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Uh, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by, was it Alder Galvin?
Yes.
Uh, discussion on that motion? Uh, Alder Grant.
Um, I just wanted to address the, I think a big concern too is the look of it. Um, one thing that wasn't mentioned is it is a two-story building. Most of the houses in that immediate area are one-story. It's a very quaint, older neighborhood, that this is a very modern design, and it's big compared to the houses next to it. Um, I've had, one of the neighbors collected fourteen signatures. I received three emails and a phone call. Uh, not a single resident was in favor of it. So, I just know it's, as alderman, it's our job to represent our constituents, so I cannot support this approval. Um, I, uh, I've had overwhelming feedback from the residents of this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Alder Hutchison and then Alder Galvin.
Okay. Uh, question for staff. Is this a rezoning?
Mr. Buck?
In the R1 low-density district, single families, two families, and townhomes are all permitted uses, some conditional, some by right.
Okay, so, it's an R1 zone. So, how many of these type of facilities can be built here in this neighborhood as R1?
You can apply in the R1 for a conditional use permit for a duplex, for a semi-detached single-family. Um, they need to be separated by at least three hundred feet.
So, there shouldn't be one within three hundred feet of this?
On the same block.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, our, our R1 is not a single-family district, it's a low-density district.
Low-density, thank you.
And then, Mr. Buck, was there anything that came up that you'd want to address in terms, in terms of questions or statements?
Um, I, well, I think that was good that, um, Alder, that it was not, it is not a rezoning. Um, we do have some conditions in the, or the plan commission has some conditions as far as design goes, and articulation on the sides of the building. Um, I, I guess that's all I would add.
Okay, sounds good. Alder Galvin?
I don't understand this. Are you s-
Sir, sir, this is now time for the council to have a debate. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, your honor. Um, I, I can understand a lot of the trepidation on the part of the, the homeowners around this, uh, planned site. Um, you know, they relayed a lot of problems down the street at other duplexes and, and buildings. Um, I get it. But I think, uh, we've had people, uh, speak tonight that explained to us that these are owner-occupied. Um, the current house I'm in, I've been in fifteen years. I was, uh, when I was looking to buy it, I found out the house next door was a duplex, went over there, met the people, and that was an owner-occupied duplex, two brothers that were fixing it up, wanted to start a family. They lived there for over ten years before they, they moved on. Uh, and it was a pleasure having them live next door to me. I mean, this is not something that's gonna be put out to rent. This is owner-occupied. Responsible parties live there. If they break the law in any way, they're held accountable. We know where they're at. This is not somebody from outside the area owns it and doesn't care about the property, which it sounds like that's what's happening in other areas of their neighborhood. Um, and that's why I'm, I'm supporting it. Um, if this was gonna be some outside agency coming in, setting up, uh, housing that, uh, they had a poor track record of taking care of, then I would certainly be concerned and, and would possibly not support that. But I, I think, you know, like it was explained, it's hard to buy a house nowadays. And that's the American dream. The one thing a recent survey said, the American dream is to own your own home. And this is an opportunity for two families to be able to do that. And, and this is not coming cheaply, uh, as explained. So, I, I think this is gonna be a benefit to that neighborhood, and, uh, I support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Scannell?
Yeah, I also support it. I just wanna piggyback on that, in that I, I appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood, but they seem to have a lot of bad information. Everything that they've mentioned is inaccurate. The, the, the concern for their, uh, the financial concern of the property values seems to be misplaced. The concern for, uh, safety seems to be misplaced. Uh, I, I feel they're going- I'm making a statement on-
Sir?
I feel they're going on a lot of bad information, which is why I, uh, if their concerns they had raised had been valid here, but we've seen how, that, that's just not the case. So, I, I hate to, I hate to, um, hold this family accountable for other problems in the neighborhood. I hate to, for the city to lose out on this, uh, increase in our levy, our tax base. And I think, uh, for the families, all the families concerned, uh, I, I think, um, those that are living there are missing an opportunity to welcome some good neighbors that are gonna be responsible. They're, they're working families. These are, uh, and, uh, and the families for this, uh, that are gonna occupy it to have this opportunity. So, I, I don't see a downside here. I appreciate the concerns, but I think it's unfortunate that they weren't addressed sooner, and, uh, the correct information was given to people so they could make a sound decision. It didn't sound like that's the case to me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Alder. Uh, let's see. Alder Weary, then Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, in a lot of cases like this, if it were a simple matter, it wouldn't need to come for us for approval. It would just be done. So, there's a reason it comes before this body, and that's so that we can listen to the alder of the district and the residents. And so, for me, it sounds overwhelming in that direction, so I'm gonna side with the alder of District One, and that sounds like they don't want this there. So, that's where my vote will be to deny. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer, and then Alder Campbell?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, this is for staff. Um, I mean, this, this lot has been vacant for some time. Um, I mean, chances are you could, another use would be just a single-family home, correct? Anything else that, I think the neighbors are maybe upset because it's, it seems to be a little bit too much for that piece of property, but it is allowed. But, you know, I'm looking at the areas around there. I know they were talking about nature and all that good stuff, but it seems to me that it isn't intended use. You can build there. Uh, you've got vacant land, farmland to the south, you've got stuff to the east, you've got a big area that's wide open. So, I understand that. I've had neighborhoods in my district where they, you know, talk about wide-open areas, and that's very nice. But the question I had is, are they, was, was there any talk of just a single-family home there versus the duplex?
Sure. Well, the, the zoning code would allow a single-family duplex with a conditional use. Um, but I guess I would point out, our code in the R1 district, a single-family needs seventy-five hundred square feet of area. So, this lot is fifteen thousand square feet. So, even if it were singles, you could divide it and put two.
Right.
Um, which is the same density as a two-family. Just this is attached, or semi-detached.
I think that's part of it, because if this does not go through, then my thought is that it could be subdivided and something else would come into it at a future time. So, I don't know if the neighbors just want nothing ever to be developed there, but, you know, we're, the city is in the process of looking at properties or, or lots that we can build on, so we can build our tax base. So, that's a tough one. I, I normally will side with the alder on something like this. I'm still on the fence as far as how I will vote. But that's what I needed to ask. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, Alder Campbell?
Just questions for staff to start. Uh, Dave, uh, I'm concerned if this gets allowed, uh, the property that's across the street from Brook Park, um, what is that zone? It's currently zoned, zoned rural residential, which is a, basically a holding zone, um, until a property owner comes and requests a zone change. The future land use designation is low-density residential. So, it would be the same as the surrounding neighborhood with a, probably with an R1 zoning. Okay, and the, the, the wooded, wooded area that's behind it, um, is zoned also the same? That is zoned R1 low-density right now. So, you, uh, the owner there, uh, could subdivide it and, and build lots whenever they choose. Do you know as if they own the, the joining all the way up to Van Castor before? Um, I don't know. Okay. Uh, I have a hard time supporting this because it is a corner building, and it'd be very unattractive if it became a nuisance. And I'd have to, if it was in my district, I'd have to support the majority of the people there as much as it's a hard decision. And I know I'm trying to clean my district up a little bit, and allowing this would not support my theories in my district also. So, I won't be supporting it.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hutchison?
Um, it's always hard to go against what those in the neighborhood are, are saying, and I understand their concern. Um, but hearing from the people selling and who they're selling it to, I don't see the reality of the concerns being as great as they were expressed. The concerns that were expressed were unknown people coming in, and who knows what they're gonna do with it. And we're at risk. And that's not the case. That's not what was explained to us. They're local people. They've got jobs. They've got businesses in the city. They're waiting for this to occur so they can move in. So, this is, seems to me, the facts seem to be here, and the concerns seem to be over here, related, unrelated to the facts. So, I'm having a hard time responding to the concerns of the neighborhood because of what their position is based on. If they were based on what we were told, who's moving in, then yeah, I would support what the neighbors are saying, but they aren't supported by that. Okay, so I am in favor of passing this. There's people waiting to build and move in. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
And I, I, I would wonder how many of the people here that expressed that they don't want this, this home built, now knowing that it's gonna be owner- now knowing that it's going to be owner-occupied by two families who have roots in the area, neighbors, I mean relatives literally around the corner, how many of these neighbors that are against it would change their mind and then welcome them into their neighborhood, knowing that? And so if we're basing this on out-of-date misinformation, and we're voting that way, I wonder how that makes us look as a city council, to reject housing that's owner-occupied because people had bad information? It just, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell, then Alder Grant?
Actually, I'm glad you brought up that point. As she stated honestly, which I'm great with that being straightforward, I heard the word "help," we're helping some subcontractors that we work with every day. Hey, I got you a great property and a great neighborhood, these are the people that are sitting here. If I could get the CUP changed, it'll be a great opportunity for you guys to raise families. When they have three, four kids each, it's going to be, it's going to be busy, and they're going to want to move out. So, what, ten years? Maybe, maybe, at least? Again, I see it as, someone that's been in the industry for a long time, I got this little jewel sitting on the corner, and I'm trying to help out these people that we work with every day, if I can get the city to change the code or the use permit. I think the person that owns property and represents property can find somebody else to go in there as easy as they can find two families to go in there, and it would fit into the neighborhood. And I don't like the fact that the properties that are undeveloped, waiting for a whole subdivision of, let's face it, old-fashioned, two-family places that, you know, we're, we need to work on trying to get the financing through and the housing down, not trying to pull favors and fit in, fit in projects in between other established neighborhoods that have been there forever, so.
Alder Grant?
Even though, I guess, question for Mr. Buck, with it being owner-occupied now, nothing is stopping it, though, from becoming a rental duplex in the future, correct?
Yeah, we do not regulate ownership of properties, it's unit and co.
So I think that's a major fear, and I don't want to say that the residents' feedback that spoke tonight is the only feedback, again, it's the look of the building, and it's the fear of, it's set up as a duplex, yes, owner-occupied now, but there's, how long is that going to last as? And now you do have, it's three bedrooms, so families on top of families. And on the other side of Humboldt, which is across from that neighborhood, there actually are a lot of duplexes and apartments. So we have a housing shortage, period. So we have a shortage of single-family homes as well. I don't want to rush the change of this when we could use single-family homes too. And we could really use one in that area with the alternatives being nearby as well.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments, Alder Eck, who hasn't spoken yet, and then Alder Scannell?
So I just, I wanted to get a clarification on it, because I feel like there's been a little bit of different information. Is it a duplex or it is a twindo? Because when I hear that it's going to be both sides owner-occupied, isn't that then a twindo? So that's a question to staff.
Yeah, Mr. Buck?
Sure, twindo is kind of a strange term. Ownership is something that you can't regulate. A single-family home can be sold, can be rented, can be owner-occupied. The difference between a twindo, I mean, I can own left-side LLC and right-side LLC and rent them both out, and it's still a condominium. But what a condo does is it requires separate utilities so that the two units, firewalls in between the buildings from peak to basement floor, so that they can be separated, can be separated and owned by two separate individuals. And whether they live there or not, we don't regulate that. So there's a little bit difference between a regular semi-detached, single-family or duplex, and one that is designed to be able to be split and sold off. But they function generally the same way, I mean, you're going to have two families living in that property. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight the point that, why the families are doing this. It's because costs are so crazy, people need to be creative. For two brothers to come together with a plan and come up with a six-hundred-thousand-dollar development, that, that's considerable, that's not fly-by-night, that's not anything that's to be scoffed at or taken lightly. That's a considerable development, and it's affordable to them this way. If they, I believe, from what I'm picking up, if they each went their own way, they wouldn't be able to afford their own homes, because of the costs. This is a way to share some costs for two brothers, raising families, they're local, they're, I just don't see a downside here at all. So I appreciate the concerns raised from the neighborhood, there's reasons to raise those. But I think they've been addressed, and I, I just can't support that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'm going to support the CUP. I remember I had a situation in my district, in a little subdivision, and I, this is five years ago, there were property owners that had four-hundred, five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, and they were concerned about someone thinking of or trying to build a duplex. And I was helping through the process, trying to navigate the conflict, and in the end, the duplex owner, or the prospective duplex owner, developer, very similar situation to what we're dealing with now, ended up backing away and just terminating their application. And the reason they gave was that we don't want to go to a neighborhood where we're not welcome. And I certainly hope that in the city of Green Bay, that we don't create an environment within neighborhoods that people who go through the proper process to build a very sizable investment into the Green Bay area, in this case, three-hundred thousand and three-hundred thousand dollars, that they're kind of treated poorly in the neighborhood. Because that is a very sizable investment, and a very sizable mortgage, and property taxes, and it seems to me, without meeting the prospective owners, they're going to invest in the city and be part of the city. And that's the type of thing we want to encourage. And just on an aside, I'm really hung up on this comment about, you know, three-hundred or, two three-hundred-thousand-dollar properties or two-quarter-million-dollar properties next to each other combined. Somehow that's going to, you know, devalue properties around it. I don't think we should consider that, I don't think that that's truthful, I don't know where that is coming from. Just looking at the properties in that neighborhood, with all due respect to the neighborhood, some of the assessed values are two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. So in fact, this property, if constructed, is actually going to be likely assessed at a higher dollar. So I think that fear might be on the other end, that this investment might raise their assessments rather than go the other direction. So for those reasons, I'm going to support. Normally, I have complete respect to Alders and Alder Grant, you're in a very difficult position. You've had conversations with the residents that I simply haven't had, so I'm sure there's a lot of passion and emotion there that I haven't witnessed, but on this particular one, I'm going to support the CUP.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Seeing none, there's a motion. Yes. Board vote has been requested, and so this is, this is for approval of item Q3. Yeah.
Thank you, you may vote.
And that is approved six to five. Onto item K, which is our public hearing, this is planning ordinance number 01-23, an ordinance amending the official map of the city of Green Bay, removing multiple roadways, and adding an extension of Hinkle Street running from West Mason Street South to Hobart Drive. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this item? Anyone here, yes. Please approach the podium and, and give your name and address and begin speaking. Looks like we also have Sam Bartels for this, this item, so feel free to come up to the podium when it's appropriate.
My name is Lori DeStarkey, I live at thirteen oh two Hobart Drive, I am directly across from the park. We have had a lot more traffic right now because of the construction on Packer Land and West Mason. The intersection that they're going to bring that traffic from and run it right through our park is an insane intersection, so my, my main concern is safety, because I watch the little kids walk down Hobart every day. Our main space in our park, from what I understand, they might be changing it to a ninety-degree angle when they come out by my street and by the park area. Our main area in our park is the green space along Hobart Drive. We have three big baseball diamonds, we have a wet area in the back that is dense, thick brush area that they're talking about trails, that sounds great, but the kids gather in the pavilion and the only large tree area along Hobart. It's safe, you can see through it, I mean, I can sit in my front yard and watch the kids, and I don't even have kids. So we are getting a little more traffic, they have to come down the frontage road and then they go through. The original plan was to bring a big curve through, and I begged them not to, because I figured that would be a raceway. And then they're going to come to a T on West Point, which is going to be a mess, because during school, it gets very busy. I know the school is going to go away, but we are filled with small kids that walk to this park, that pedal to this park, they even cut through my backyard to this park. So the safety of the kids crossing Hobart Drive, and I beg that it's a ninety-degree turn, like they had showed us a map, and a stop sign, maybe a crosswalk to get them across the street, because I don't want to see anybody hurt. Again, right now with the construction already over in the other intersection, more people are finding our cut-through, and it isn't very safe, we have speeders usually only at the end of baseball games. As the young guys kind of leave, they hot-rod through there, but usually it's a very safe area. And this is going to bring a lot of flow through. My wish would be bring your development and your houses, small houses, they're going to build back there, great. I would love it if they didn't continue that road, because going through our park, that is the only usable tree area along there. The rest is very nice, but this is the little kid area, this is our pavilion, this is the spot everybody used throughout COVID. So my concern is that traffic flowing through, slowing them down, kids crossing the street, as little, little, if you have to come through the park, as little of the green space, that's our only real green space. Trails and baseball diamonds are great, but this is where everybody goes, they walk their dogs, the kids pedal, they walk across Hobart to the ice skating ponds. So everybody is crossing that street, and if it gets really busy, it's going to be kind of a mess. I also want to say that at our last council meeting, our District Eleven elderman came to the meeting and told the city council that everybody at the park meeting was good for it. They were not, I know many of the people there. One couple left upset, I wasn't there, but my cousin, her husband, and my neighbor were there. And one couple left because they were upset about the map. One couple is my cousin, and they definitely, her and her husband definitely don't want it to destroy the park. And then the third person, I think, was an association member of our neighborhood. So it wasn't really forthcoming, none of us wanted it, none of us on that road wanted. We want our kids to be able to safely get to that park. We don't want that tree space destroyed, because to us, that is our main gathering place, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comments. And next, we have, we have Sam Bartels?
Hi, I'm Sam Bartels, I live 2557 St. Stephen Court, which is in MacArthur Heights Neighborhood Association. I'm the president of the association. And I was made aware of this at our last meeting a couple weeks ago, where the neighbors on Hobart that received the mailing brought me the thing, that was the first I heard of it. And the map that they were given showed, you know, like it was going to affect the greenway a lot more than what the amendments that they made now, I think, are impacting the green space a lot less. And we did gather the Alders and the developer for like an impromptu meeting, just so they could discuss what was actually taking place. And being the host of the meeting, you know, I was there for the whole thing, there were some who left early, but when we went through it and discussed it, the majority of the people that were there, I do believe were in favor of it. Personally, I like the idea that we're gaining a lot more park space. Yeah, we're losing a small portion of that green area, but originally, we thought it was going to go like right where our shelter is and take out that small area of trees. But after it was explained to us, you know, the options that we had, I, I think it'll be better in the long run. And as far as the traffic concerns, anybody that turns off of Hinkle right now is going down Hobart. So all you're doing is switching the route a block this way and coming over, instead of going this way and coming over. So I, I don't think it's going to increase traffic, but I understand the concerns of people living right on the street, but there are no crosswalks on Hobart now, which is a straightaway, you know, and if you have the, add the curve with the stop sign, I think it alleviates the speed issues. I mean, yeah, we have speed problems all over the city, and people, the ball diamonds are there, when they leave their games afterwards, yeah, they're speeding out of the parking lot and everything, but, you know, hopefully, when the park gets redeveloped, or, you know, we can maybe add other parking lots off of the Hinkle extension, maybe to the back of the diamonds, or that would help alleviate the, you know, them coming right out at this, these residents, but as a whole, I thought, you know, our association was, for the most part, in favor of it. I'm personally in favor of it, so.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Any other folks who'd like to speak to this item? Yeah, please approach the podium. And then just state your name and address.
My name is Erin Farre, I live at 255 Sumac Drive. We do own a duplex at the end of Bellwood. My concern would be, since it's all wetland back there, where's the water going to go when the development comes? Because our basements are going to flood. That's a flood plain in there. If you can figure out how to do that, I don't have a problem with it, but the main concern would be, where is all that water going to go? When you take all that vegetation out of that area.
Thank you. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, good seeing you, neighbor.
Yeah.
Regarding that, because someone else had expressed that concern, and I completely understand that. Question for you, though, is, in your neighborhood there, have you experienced flooding?
Yes.
Significant flooding into your basement?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So when, we lived there before we moved where we are now. The sewer system there is very hard to get to, and that, it goes back by Aurora and all that stuff back there. It did flood our basement. The house, so there's two houses on our side, there's two duplexes on our side of the street, one on the corner. The house next to that, their yard is always flooded. They've probably got about at least a foot and a half of water in their yard every, every spring.
All right, thank you.
So that would be a problem.
So, so you said that you would generally be in favor if the city could ensure that flood
That they take care of whatever the issue is for the water.
Like a retention pond in the park or something like that, the water could-
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And to that point, maybe Director Grenier, if you could just speak generally to stormwater management? When a new subdivision goes in, what's required of the developer in that situation?
Well, the developer is going to be, developer is going to be required to implement a stormwater management plan that addresses the built-out condition having no more discharge than a pre-developed condition. So that would be incumbent upon the developer to be able to propose something that meets with our review and satisfaction. I think the condition that the last person was describing is the result of the storm sewer that discharges along, essentially along the, the streets that were previously mapped, those which are being requested to be removed from the the official map by this action. There is a currently navigable stream, determined by Department of Natural Resources as being navigable, that we can't work in. So we, we cannot do anything within that stream bed, we're prohibited from touching- So we, we, we cannot do anything within that stream bed. It, we're prohibited from touching it to try to clean it out or make it drain better. That's, that's an action that uh, essentially nature has to take care of. That's one of the reasons that the development plan that was originally uh, put together for this property has never been enacted is because we can't get the necessary permitting out of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources to go down that former uh, road pattern.
Thanks. So this is a little bit confusing. We, we had the public hearing on this item. We're not gonna be taking a vote on it for, for a little while later, but appreciate all the testimony from, from the public on this. Uh, yeah, if you want to speak to this item, feel free. And just uh, state your name and address and got three minutes.
My name is Paul Heaney. I live on the corner of Hobart and Bellwood Lane. And I'd like to address that water problem also. It's bad. And I'd like you to already know that the storm sewers off of Trojan lead down to Bellwood and down into that area. And they're proposing that street on Hinkle to go through to the back. The storm sewer off of Mason is also gonna go down into that area. So that water is all gonna end up there also. And they're talking about cutting down trees. Well, we all know how much water trees absorb. That's not a good idea, I don't think. Plus there is a four hundred and twenty-five year old tree in the back there, one that's three hundred and twenty-five years old that is uh, registered with the state. I don't believe the state would allow them to have hassle those trees. They shouldn't if they do, you know, that's history. That four hundred one is about from here to the wall wide. I don't think any of us want that done or hassles. What I'm saying, the storm sewers are all leading into that area. There's uh, as she said, there's uh, four duplexes on Ho- on uh, on uh, on the street along with my home on a corner of Bellwood and, and Hobart. So you have uh, nine sun pumps right in that area. In the spring, they're pumping every five minutes. They also pump in the winter time. Retention pond, sounds good, but they still have to let it have an outlet for retention pond. And where does that water go? Down to the water table. So the water table uh, is gonna rise there irregardless. I would like you to take in consideration of the flooding that's already going on there to either cut that street short of that area or not allow it at all. There's a bottleneck on, on Hinkle and Mason right now. It's gonna be a double bottleneck if they start building in there. That's my thought on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, if there aren't any other individuals to speak?
Hi, my name is Chris Kents and I live at twelve fifty-six Hobart Drive. Initially, when they said they were putting this road, it went like, right in front of my house this way and that way. I have a big bay window, so I'm picturing lights all night long from all these cars coming. And the other concern I have is in regard to the retention pond they mentioned to get rid of the water. From my understanding of retention ponds, they smell and it doesn't seem like a very safe thing to have in a park where kids are walking around. I'm concerned about the safety because we do have a lot of children that walk in that area. And I know the school is going to be gone, but it's a park. You're going to have kids. Um, and there, it's the only park really in that area. So to go through the trees and take away part of the park, I just think that there has to be a better way. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alright, thank you for all that testimony. We'll now move along to ordinances, second reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these uh, ordinances with one roll called vote. Seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to adopt, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Any discussion? Alright, we will use the board.
You may vote. I'm sorry, you may vote now.
Alright, and uh, those are adopted unanimously. Onto the report of redevelopment authority. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it and that report has been approved. Onto the report of the Improvement and Services Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Uh, Improvement and Services. Items to be held separately here? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Report of the Protection and Policy Committee. Motion to approve, made by Alder Stevens and seconded by Alder Scannell. Items here to be handled separately. Items here? Um, six is at the end. Um, so anything other than six, we do, we do have somebody here who'd like to speak on nine. Okay, Alder Scannell, like to handle that separately. Um, all in favor of the remainder of the report would signify by saying aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved with the exception of item nine. Motion to approve, item nine, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Motion open the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor say aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it, the floor is open. So we have Jesse Robinhorst?
Hi, my name is Jesse Robinhorst. I live at nineteen oh five Dechner Avenue. I moved into my residence in ninety-eight. I bought the residence in two thousand. I've kept the property upkept the best that I could. Um, I've had little incidents with the city besides parking in the past years. Um, in twenty twenty, I had a friend approach me to re-sign my house instead of repainting it. Two months later, I had a s- a knee surgery and I was out of work. I think I went back for like a, a, a month and then I had an ankle issue. And didn't have the money to pay him to keep going. In twenty twenty-one August, I got a back issue and I've been out of work ever since. In April of twenty-two, um, Mr. Meves sent me a, a, a inspection fee to get my siding at my house. I called Mr. Meves immediately and told him what was going on. Um, I don't have the money to pay, to, to do this. I don't know anything about siding. I don't know how to do it myself besides my back injury. And he insisted that he gets a timeline. Well, I told him I, I don't have a timeline. I don't know it's in my future. So far, I've paid a so- seven hundred and forty dollar ticket. They took three hundred and fifty dollars out of my escrow last year, which put me behind. And I'm looking at nine hundred and fifty dollars and more in fees right now, reinfection fees. After eight months of being fined twenty times, Mr. Meves set me up with this Neighbor Works place. Uh, I went down there immediately, got them what they wanted, uh, February first, I believe it was. With the paperwork and everything, how, how it all works, everything's been signed, everything's taken care of. The project is moving forward and is starting uh, the week after Labor Day. I have the paperwork here if you need to see it, um, from Neighbor Works. I'm just asking to reduce or diminish these fines. I, I mean, I, I don't have the money. I'm trying to live on sixty percent of my wage right now. I just had another surgery on Friday. I don't know what my future holds, whether I'm going back to work or what. I just think it's unfair that I'm being punished for being injured and I, I mean, my escrow's already behind from last year and now it's gonna be even farther behind because they just take it right out of your escrow. And I, I don't have the funds to be doing this. I mean, I got twenty-one, twenty-two hundred dollars in fines so far. I mean, that's the price of the materials.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Any questions? Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, if, if I could ask you just a question or two. And I, I, um, I, I sure feel for you, I mean, with what you're going through physically and medically. But the city has reduced the fine so far by three hundred and fifty dollars, that's correct?
That, that was the motion or whatever it was, whatever you call it at the last meeting.
And so what you owe yet is six hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, well, yeah, besides a thousand, I'm already out.
Okay. Would, would this be easier for you to do if it was set up in a payment plan over a year or so or whatever the city's willing to work out with you?
I mean, I, I don't have no money, dude.
What, what I'm asking, sir, is would you have a little bit every month to pay it off?
I could have a little bit, but I, I don't, I mean, I don't know how much. Right now, I'm a couple hundred dollars a month short. And I live by myself. I don't have no roommates. I don't, I mean, just trying to survive.
Okay, I'm just asking that question. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell?
Sorry to hear for uh, your injuries and it, it can be a ever-changing thing that any one of us here sitting today could end up with tomorrow. Just went through a similar instance with someone and they had to sell their business. They couldn't keep it up no more, so. And I had to think hopefully that doesn't happen to me because I bought that business. So just relative to what's happening, I can understand and I, I drive past your house all the time. And I know you're a good person. I've known you for many years. Haven't talked to you in many. Surprised to see you sitting here today. I'm sorry to hear for, hear for that. And uh, this is a great guy right here. Um, when I needed to, he gave me a place to stay. And I think that goes a long way. So I'm here to support whatever we can do for this kind guy that lives on a corner property, again, just like we just decided. A corner property always sticks out. It's a very busy street and it's by a school and such and it sounds like you're trying to do everything you can. You know, one thing that I learned is you gotta really keep up on it and it sounds like you have, so. Similar instance, many years ago, I got a fine for a dilapidated fence. I got arrested for it. I went to jail. I paid the, I paid out of my briefcase that day over three thousand dollars that would have covered the dilapidated fence. It still pisses me off and I feel that you're kind of in that same position, so. I'm here to try to ask my fellow elders to help this person out as best we can. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people here, so why should we penalize people that get hurt? And I agree with them.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Sir, uh, sorry to hear about your predicament. Um, I'm looking at a document that's part of the agenda that city staff created. And it looks, according to this, that per Neighbor Works uh, grant or some sort of assistance that the siding or the updates will be complete. So will that, in your opinion or experience, will that put you in compliance with everything that the city's requiring of you?
As far as I know, um, I'm working with Jeff at Neighbor Works. He's kind of my middleman between me and Mr. Meves. When he kept him posted or whatever and let him know that we're moving forward, we got a contractor, blah, blah, blah. Um, the first thing Mr. Meves said was, what about the garage? Well, the garage is cold. The front just needs painting. So I'm, I'm hoping, once it's sited and, and the windows are, are, are wrapped, I just redid the, the roof on both the garage and the house like ten years ago, so that's all newer. Um, fascia and, and whatever that other stuff is called, all around the upper half. So with this project, they're gonna wrap my windows, um, replace the front entry porch, so that's cold. Just, just an overhang thing and, and side the place, which I, I, I mean, it's, it's a contract. I would have think it would be cold then. I mean, everything's, what, what it is right now is it's just insulation. That's all the further that we had gotten.
So um, thank you for that. From May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two until January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, so about eight months. The city document said that there were twenty-three re-inspections performed and that, of course, is leading to the payment that's owed to the city or the fine. Uh, what would you say, how would you characterize your communication on your end to the city? Were you working with the inspector? Were you responding? Were you trying to work out a solution? And let me preface, let me state why I'm asking you that question. Because in my understanding with our inspection department, with constituents who are in a situation like you were or are that the inspection department works with them, as long as there's some progress and good communication. We're not looking to make life miserable for people in the city who can't comply for good reasons. I mean, you might disagree with that, but that. Well, what was your level of communication on your end to the city?
I tried to keep in touch with Tim Meves as much as I could and it seemed like every time that I called him, the next day there was a fine in my office. So I just kind of left it alone because I got dates here of what times, what fines that I've gotten. I mean, there's fines here that I've gotten a fine every day for five days. I mean, I, I just, are you really coming out to my house every day to look at that? I don't think so.
I think they are, but I, I, I agree with you. I, it's not a question, but my opinion is sometimes to send an inspector day, every few days, it just seems from a resident standpoint over the top, but there's reasons why we do that to force compliance for people who are not responding. And I don't, I'm not an expert in this situation, but it seemed to me that maybe the city considered that you were not responding or communicating the way that you should have in that situation. Is that a fair assessment?
Uh, that's the way they're looking at it.
I don't know if that's what they're, I'm just trying to.
I mean, that's, like I say, the way I got these fines written down and when I, whenever I'd see them, um, there's just no rhyme and reason. I mean, like he'll, he'd leave me alone for a couple of weeks. And then one, once, one time there was five, five days in a row, next time was six days in a row. And it was just un- un- unconventional. It's like every time, like I said, every time I call them, here come the fines again. So I, I, I communicated with them the best I could, but it just seemed like it was, it was hurting myself by letting them know that I'm still off of work. I'm, I'm looking at a, a surgery, I, you know, I, I don't know where I stand.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alder, Eric?
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify because I'm, I'm reading that um, the Policy and Protection Committee did recommend a reduction of your fines. And that was what is on the list for us to approve. So I just wanted to know if you're aware, if you're made aware of that, that that was recommended to reduce them to six hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alder Stoyer? And then Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Robin, Matt, uh, sorry for your situation, but uh, you know, I was, I'm looking at all of the various, you call them fines, uh, inspection department calls them inspection fee, so to speak, so it's a matter of clarification. You know, you're saying it's a fine, but it, you know, they're, they're inspecting your, your property and you were saying five or six days in a row. I'm just looking, there's a couple that are fairly close together, but they're usually about a week, maybe a week or so. There was like, one was a month. You know, there was maybe one the following day. I, we've worked with the inspection department a lot in the past and I, you know, I, I think there are times where it seems frustrating for us as council that, that there are times where there are properties that seem to have an overabundance of these things. And normally what happens is there's some kind of a breakdown in communication somewhere. And it sounded like uh, Inspector Me- Meves put, you know, a card on your back door and there were a couple of times he was trying to get a hold of you. And I think Alder Burnett was kind of bringing that up too, that even with your situation- even with your situation, that usually the the inspection department, in my uh experience, will try to work with you as much as possible. So um they're not fines, they're inspection fees, but in in essence, you're saying they're fines. And I I don't know, I just, I look at the records and there's a couple that are fairly close a couple of days, but there's some that are about a month apart, so. I don't think it's like five or six days in a row that you had it unless you can tell me otherwise.
I have them all written down here if you'd like to look at them. I'm missing three.
Mention one or two, mention one or two days. That's all I'm asking.
Let's see, uh twelve-five, twelve-six, twelve-eight, twelve-twelve, twelve-thirteen.
Okay. That's one area, yeah, that was the one area that there was a few of those together, yeah.
And then back in November, eleven-seven, eleven-nine, eleven-sixteen, eleven-twenty-two, eleven-twenty-eight, eleven-twenty-nine.
Okay. All right, I have those here too. So thank you. I appreciate that. So um I'll wait till we speak. I'm done for now.
Sounds good. Alda Galvin.
Mr. Robin Horse, um have you been here all night?
I have.
Okay. Did you hear earlier when we were discussing about that home that was proposed to be built on Lancaster?
I kinda did, yes.
And did you hear what the neighbors were saying about some of the problem homes in their neighborhood and how it detracted from the value of their home?
Yes.
Okay. So you have a home that in twenty nineteen, it sounds like you, I don't know if you were duped into taking your siding off instead of just repainting it?
Twenty-twenty. I don't know why they keep coming up with twenty-nineteen.
All right, I'll I'll give you.
Fourth of July weekend of twenty-twenty.
I'll give you twenty-twenty, okay. And your house has looked the way it looks in the pictures until now. But you weren't injured until twenty-twenty-one.
I was injured prior to that. It was knee injury and ankle injury.
And I will uh, I will uh come to the defense of Inspector Maves. I've worked with him for almost eight years. Um I have found him to be trustworthy and forthright. Um I think if he documents that he tried to contact you, I believe he did. And it sounds like there's a a lack of response on your part, according to the notes that we're reading here. Uh and I've seen him work with people with dilapidated homes or homes that were in violation in my district. And he works with them. He's even told me that he's not gonna do anything, that he's gonna back off and give these people opportunities to repay, make the repairs over a period of time, especially during COVID. Uh but from what I'm seeing here, if these notes are accurate, uh he tries to contact you, he gets no response, he's unable to leave phone messages, he even taped a letter to your door with his business card. And it seems like he got no response from you, other than until, until he directed you to Neighbor Works to try and get you some assistance. And uh so I'm just, I'm 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 thinking about the neighbors in the area. They're trying to sell their homes or maintain their homes and this home has been a detraction, devaluing theirs. And you know, I just think uh it, I'm not sure if there was necessarily a an equal give and take on this uh situation. And so I'm I I'm looking at, you know, you've had fines, you've paid some of them, but the city committee already took three hundred and fifty dollars off. And I've asked you if you're willing to try and do a a payment plan. You don't seem in favor of that. You know, I'm 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 not sure. It it costs the taxpayers money to have inspectors out there. And every time they have to go to a home, that takes time from other duties that they have. And it looks like he went to your home quite a few times trying to get compliance or some kind of cooperation from you. And again, I don't see that here. In fact, you didn't even show up for your your um your hearing when you were given a citation, right?
I was sick.
And did you bother calling the municipal court and telling them you weren't gonna be there?
I didn't know that was an option until I went back when I reopened the case and went and talked to the judge. I didn't even know that was an option.
Well, and and you won't know unless you read the citation and it gives you the phone number to call. I mean, you know, I mean, it's it's, I'm sure they already talked to you about that. So I'm I'm just wondering how much effort you put into trying to work with the city on this. As opposed to you got in a bad way and you just kind of ignored it and it only got worse on you.
Well, I know it's ninety percent of my neighbors. None of them have an issue with it because they know my situation. And actually, one of the neighbor's homes sold twice in this time for over fifty thousand, what it was worth. So I I don't believe that it's bringing down property taxes or whatever. I mean, uh property pricing or anything at at this point in time. And as of next month, it won't be an issue.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any more questions? All right, thanks for your testimony, sir. Most closed floor made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Uh there was a motion and a second, I believe, to approve the item. Any further discussion from council? Alda Campbell?
I guess with my questions, not so much with Mr. Robin Horse here and probably the fact that I've known him way a long time ago. I'm just, he's a good citizen and I was speaking up for good citizens. And it doesn't sound like his neighbors have a problem, but as I stated, I have a little problem probably with the city inspection department. Now that I'm represented, I'm trying to fix that. So I'm gonna have to recuse myself for the first time ever because I'm abstaining because of my feelings, probably both ways.
Okay.
Wish you luck.
Very well. And sir, you can um be seated now if you'd like. Uh whatever you'd like to do, yes. Yep, feel free to stick around. Uh additional comments? Alder Scanell and Alda Burnett?
Mister President. Thank you. Uh perhaps a question for staff that the um Neighbor Works grant money, was that something that was collected or distributed through ARPA dollars?
Um part of it was ARPA, the energy portion of it, but our home improvement loan program has been around for a long time.
Okay, so the gentleman accessed the money through Neighbor Works to make the improvement, but it was partially, you can't track every dollar, of course, but. All right, thank you. Um you know, it's, these are tough ones because on the face, you want to believe everything residents say and in this case, you know, I think he's being sincere. I think I've met a lot of city residents and homeowners that are, you know, there there's a lot that goes into someone who's not able to maintain their property, whether it be embarrassment, some uh feelings of just whatever regarding their inability to work or especially if they feel they were taken advantage of or got into a bad situation. I have a lot of respect for our housing inspection staff. I really do. Uh they've been phenomenal to work with and most residents that have had some issues, I have been able to trust them to work it out to be fair. But every now and then, you know, something falls through and a resident will come to us and ask for a little compassion or maybe to try to understand their side of the story. Um you know, in a way that doesn't reveal itself on government documents as part of an agenda packet. One thing that I've always conflicted about is when inspectors go to properties every day or every other day. In this case, it seemed like four or five inspections within a week, week and a half. And when you are giving inspection fees of fifty dollars and now seventy-five dollars every time, that certainly adds up. And I can see how a resident is kind of appalled by that because I get it's tax dollars that are paying the salary of the inspectors and I know that's a tool we have in our toolbox to force compliance for situations that a person is not complying. But every now and then, you know, a situation comes up where he's accessing ARPA dollars that was given to us through our federal government. And we, as a council, voted to use the ARPA dollars for situations just like this, when a person is in a hard situation or are victims of maybe their own doing or perhaps circumstances, there is a time from time to time that we need to extend a little bit of grace and realize that situations like this are not always easy to our residents who are unable, for whatever reason, to maintain their properties. Maybe he was embarrassed, maybe he avoided our inspector, maybe he did not communicate the way that he should. But I think in some circumstances, that's a basic human emotion that if we're in a similar situation, we might succumb to that too. I'm not excusing it, not saying it's okay not to work with our inspection department, but in a situation like this, especially because the ARPA dollars were given to us for situations like this and we distributed them for situations like this, I'm willing to concede a little bit even more than perhaps what the the committee approved and refunding.
Any other comments? Alda Scanell?
Uh yeah, first of all, I want to make it clear, uh our inspection's department did a fantastic job. They're doing a great job. But they're in a bit of a pickle. And I think Alder should be aware of this. Um that it's, we've put upon them during the budget process a a uh that they need to be a revenue stream to make up part of our budget. And so inspections, I think, acted absolutely correctly with everything they did here. And in the past, they may have rescinded these fees themselves or some of them. But because we have put upon them the burden of being a revenue stream, they're being very strict. And here's the problem, if we're not strict, we put that burden upon them and then we're gonna say, oh, but forget it now. Well, what the, what direction does staff go then? Do they, you know, they're in a bind. They don't know what to do now. Should they put the inspection fees on and then, you know, we just throw them out? I mean, it, staff is in a bind here. And for myself, I think this is a hardship case and I would have I actually, the the motion at first was reduce it in half. I made that motion. And it didn't fly and so we raised it up a little bit more. Uh for myself, I would, I would have no problem at all reducing this to zero personally. I I think it's, staff did the right thing. Um I think unfortunately, because of the budget situation, we're in a sticky pickle here. And um so how would we, how do we support staff? What are we gonna do here? Or or how do we support our our citizens who are having a hard time, a hard luck case here? I mean, I I feel very strong and I don't care if he's a nice guy or not a nice guy, he's a hardship case. I I believe that firmly. And um I I I would love to do more. Um but we have put ourselves in a difficult place. We've put staff in a difficult place. We've put our constituents in a difficult place. And um uh I don't know the way out. I mean, like I, like I said, I I first made the motion to to cut it in half and it'd been three hundred dollars cheaper. And uh the committee thought that, you know, given the situation, it should be more. Um I don't know what to propose as an amendment. Um I think if someone made an amendment to reduce it, I would be sorely tempted to support that. But then again, what are we telling staff? Uh I want to be supportive of staff, so, yep.
Yeah, on on that point, maybe we can go to Director
Sure.
Re-Nearwig just to talk about that situation a bit.
So thank you for speaking kindly about inspectors, but I I guess I want to be very clear that our inspectors are not generating revenue. We are following our standard operating procedures. And really, these re-inspection fees are set out to get people's attention. If we're getting ghosted, that's the cost to the taxpayers for that inspector to go out and check that site. And if we can't get any action from the person, that that's what the fee is meant for, to get to get the attention of that person, right?
Right, right.
So we haven't issued a fee since January um of this year. So if you look at when this, the timeline and the ability to actually issue a re-inspection fee every day, there haven't been very many re-inspection fees issued for this time period. Um and I also wanted to point out too that this was brought up at Protection and Policy is that we do have a time limit on appealing these, which is thirty days. Um and the last re-inspection fee was issued in January, so we're kinda breaking the mold on that. That's council's perusal on what you want to do in this situation, but I just want to be clear that we're not, our inspectors are not out there generating revenue. They're doing their job in the standard operating procedures on how we issue those re-inspection fees.
And and a little bit of a side issue, but Alda Burnett and I had a conversation of kinda providing a budget update to council, maybe at a future, you know, one of these upcoming finance committee meetings. I think that might be helpful on on this revenue source, if you will, and others, just to let people know where things stand because there are, there isn't any pressure being exerted to generate money to help balance the budget from the administration.
From the administration, sir.
Right.
Right.
Uh but
And 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 yeah, I did misspeak a little. I do want, I do want to make it clear that they are following procedure. Uh but part of that, in the past, used to be they they did rescind if they thought there was a hardship case here. And I believe they're a little hesitant to do that. Now it's more incumbent upon us.
Yeah.
I think there have been a couple that have been rescinded, actually.
But but they did, right, they did.
Clips, yep. So we do do that.
Yep, they do that and I think they they did what they could, they felt they could do here.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Alda Storey?
Uh Director Wig, I just have a question here. Uh with the Neighborhood Works uh group working here with with the owner, are are these re-inspection fees uh ceasing for now or what what's going on?
I don't think one's been issued since January.
So what is what is the total, you know, I'm looking at our agenda item, but what is the total that is owed right now?
Well, I think as a result of the P and P meeting, it would be six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, and he's looking to rescind that.
You've rescinded. I think it was nine fifty was originally, it was brought down to six fifty um at the meeting.
Guess the other question I had, he, Mr. Robin Horse brought it forward too, is that there were two periods where there were like five inspections within a week
Mm-hmm.
both times. And I I I've had some problem with that in the past too. We've had other situations where a home where somebody had four or five in a week and that just seemed a little out of character. So I don't know if you can explain maybe those two time periods?
I think it might, you know, it's the call of the inspector and I think it might have been an act of trying to get a response from the owner. You know, sometimes they'll go back every day in hopes that, you know, call us, please, so we can work on this and get a timeline together.
I have no doubt. I mean, I I have very good luck with Inspector Meves as well as the rest of the staff. I've had no real issues, but every once in a while, like Alda Burnett said, sometimes things come up and it just doesn't seem to pass that smell test, but um well, good, so he's not getting any more. Are things moving?
Well, no, because he, because, you know, he made the application for the loan. He's working on, you know, we, we're aware of that, so.
Okay, so we're moving forward with that, so.
Right, which is great. I mean, that's a great loan product. I mean, that'll be good, really good for him.
So where's the house at right now? Is it moving along well?
Um I believe, I think the application has been approved and I think they're just waiting for the contractors to start, so.
Okay.
Yay.
All right, thank you.
Alda Wery?
All good comments. Um yeah, as an older person, you're, you know, the inspection department's so important, you know, to to handling complaints in your neighborhoods. Unfortunately, it it can mount up and and be quite, quite hefty. But it is to get the issue resolved. Now, every situation's different, which is why the appeal process is so important. We're doing what we set in place. And so, you know, after having read everything and and watched the meeting and heard everything today, um I'm gonna make a motion to reduce it to a total of two hundred and twenty-five dollars with the reasoning being one fine per month, fifty October, fifty November, fifty December, and then January it went up to seventy-five. So it'd be two twenty-five. That's my motion.
Alda Wery makes a motion to uh reduce the the fees uh from six fifty to two twenty-five?
Two twenty-five, yeah.
Two twenty-five, that was seconded by Alda Burnett. Discussion on that motion? Alda Storey?
I think that's more than fair. I think there should be a little bit of skin in the game regardless of of the situation, but I I think that's a good, good compromise.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes appear to have it. Um and we will move along. On to report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, uh seconded by Alder Scanell. Any names um to be handled separately or recusals? Uh Alda Storey?
Kenoch is who I pull out. I know the person.
You're abstaining on that one?
I'm abstaining, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Alda. Alda Burnett?
Um Brienne Burnett.
And Savannah Burnett, I'd like to abstain. I don't know if they're related, but there are a lot of Bernettes running around and I don't want to take a chance.
All right, a couple more abstentions there. Anything else on this? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and that report has been approved. Alda Campbell, did you have something?
I'm figuring out where we're at near.
We're on report of the Plan Commission.
Yeah, um I like pull number five.
Yeah, so I'll.
For discussion.
Entertain a motion on the report.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately. What was that? Those seven? Others? And item nine is is gonna be at the end. First. I'm sorry, which one did we? Oh, never, never mind, that was Plan Commission. So seven and what else? Five. Five and seven. Any others? All right, items five and All right. Items five and seven will be handled separately, hearing none others. All in favor, the remainder of the report, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved, with the exception of items five and seven. Your wishes on item five? Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens.
I'm not perceiving that Plan Commission failed to pass motions of deny and approve conditional use permit.
There were two motions made, one approval, one denial, and they both locked up, two to two.
So, they're asking us to do the job.
So, it's being forwarded on the ballot recommendation.
Yep. So, item five was pulled, um, that had a motion, um, in favor and a second. And I don't know if there's anyone here. Motion to open the floor has been made by Alder Scanell. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Burnett. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The floor is open. Mr. Weichel, if you'd like to speak to this item, feel free. Just state your name and address. Very good. Yep, and, uh, if you could just state your name and address for the council, and then we allow for three minutes for, uh, for comments.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Basude Badikari. I live in Sheboygan. I am here for, uh, requesting the conditional use permit for two oh one North Monroe Avenue. Thank you.
Very good. Any, any questions for the individual? Alder Galvin?
Welcome, sir. Um, can you give us a, like a brief synopsis of what you're planning to do with this property?
Sure. At two oh one North Monroe Avenue, um, we have been coordinating with the city, uh, for the past few weeks. The plan is to develop a convenience store, uh, authentic Indian restaurant, which I am already, uh, involved in, one in Sheboygan. I have a packaging store, shipping store, like UPS or any other franchise that, that we can achieve. And the three electric charging stations. That's the plan we have right now.
What, what kind of gas station are you gonna be putting in there?
Uh, so far, we have received approval from the BP, BP brand.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for our guests? Alder Burnett?
Uh, sir, thanks for being here. Uh, one thing that I just want to clarify is would you be operating the entire place, the C-store, the restaurant, and charging stations?
Yes, all those businesses will be under my operation.
Okay.
No, like rent outs or leasing. I will be operating all.
Okay. Uh, some of the, uh, opposition, let's just say, to this proposal from Mr. Wilco, and now your, your involvement, uh, is this idea that it's just not the right fit for that area. Like, okay, it, it could go somewhere. We welcome it in Green Bay, but not there. What would your response to that be?
So, if we look at, in a very simple way, a gas station, charging station, uh, who doesn't need the shipping service, an authentic Indian restaurant? We all need that. These are like everyday use, no matter where we go. So, with, uh, my experience in this gas station industry, convenience store, restaurant, liquor store, it's almost like eighteen, nineteen years. So, I see it's going to add a value in multiple different ways. I don't see any reason it's going to hinder or degrade the value in any way. Uh, definitely, from social point of view, there could be concerns, uh, whenever, you know, there are convenience stores, and there are so many examples around, which are dirty, not handled properly, not enough manpower, all those kind of issues. Uh, when I found this location, the idea went in my mind, and I wanted to run this place. I want to run this place with a very, you know, high level of standards and a whole different, unique idea. I like the location of the building, and when I went inside, you know, a picture came in my mind, this is what I'm going to do here, this is how my walk-in coolers, beer cups, this is how the customer service, all those kind of little things, it came in my mind, and I thought, well, a restaurant and convenience store, there is downtown, so many offices, apartments, all that traffic, a shipping service is going to be great. It's going to create employment opportunities, it's going to add value, you know, um, you know, as a whole economic activity, it's going to add something to the existing, uh, value what we have. It's going to upgrade it, I guess. And I would also like to request, I should be given an opportunity to operate and run that place, and then, you know, prove to the community the quality and service that we are going to serve there.
Sir, could you, uh, tell me a little bit more about the restaurant? Is it like a, kind of, some gas station, C-store, restaurant combinations? My mind goes immediately to like fast food type places. So, gas station, Taco Bell, ta, gas station McDonald's. Is it that sort of situation, or is it a sit-down establishment?
It's going to be, basically, there is going to be a separation in the middle, locked, where only employees can go from one side to the other side if needed. Otherwise, this will be too separate. The building, uh, that main level is around like nine thousand plus square feet. So, thirty-five hundred square feet will be convenience store, and we'll have UPS or some shipping service for one thousand or twelve hundred square feet, and the rest will be restaurant. So, these two places will be separated on towards the end of the.
Is it a, as far as the restaurant, though?
Dining restaurant, yes.
Dining, not quick casual, just sit down?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, please?
Any other questions? Alder Scanell?
Uh, is it also not true that your corporate headquarters is gonna be housed there? Yes, uh, yeah, that's what I am thinking. Uh, I already have, uh, two properties here in Deep Pier, and one already in Main Street, and recently purchased, uh, one restaurant in, uh, University Avenue. So, kind of, maybe liking the Green Bay area more now. So, this will be like a headquarters, yes. And, um, how important are the gas pumps to this? Could you in any way go forward without the gas pumps? Definitely. That's a very good question. I appreciate that. Because gas station brings in a lot of traffic, and the cost of construction and the purchase of the building price, remodeling, if we don't have the gas pumps, it does not, I don't see financial viability. So much, you know, I don't see that financial viability where that would support the business as a whole.
Any other questions for the guests? Alder Campbell?
So, how many total businesses are gonna be in this, on this property?
Three businesses, sir. A convenience store, shipping, and the restaurant.
I see a, probably a traffic conflict with, between your parking for your restaurant people, and people getting in and out of your gas station. It seems like if that was at the neighbors, you'd be like, God, I wish that wasn't there, because I'd have, you know, people would be able to get in and out easier. And it is next to the library. You know, downtown's all about foot traffic and parking and, and, and walking and seeing everything. Um, you know, there used to be a convenience store for many, many, many years. I think one of the very first ones, right down on, is it Walnut, the one that goes to East High School? And that ended up be a hangout, and it ended up to be a problem situation then. Finally, there was shooting involved there. And, uh, everything sounds good, and I'm a business guy, and I, I could see the opportunity, but, and I'm good for trying to use a property for multiple ideas. And I understand that, and I respect that, that, the intuition of walking in and seeing the vision, cause I've done that. And so, you know, I'm support for all that, but it, you know, it, it always doesn't work, and I'm sure you're a different level businessman than I was. But, and, and, you know, doesn't mean it, uh, you know, in this, it, it doesn't seem like the right fit to me, and I have a little conflict with the library. I also have a conflict with, you know, or a concern that, you know, Main Street is a really good place for gas stations too, but only so many fit there. Only so many carlets fit on a thoroughfare, and, and so on. And I would think, and that's, that is one corridor that doesn't have a lot of them on. There's gotta be a real reason why, whether it's a traffic flow or nothing. I mean, I'd be all for supporting a, a business, a restaurant. Uh, but the whole gas and the whole total use and the mixed use, and there's just not enough here for me to be clear on to, to, to vote on it. And I, I could see why the committee had a problem and a tied vote on it. So, I'm still kind of on the fence for this, so. It just seems over, a, a lot of things going on, and which way is it gonna work, and which way is it gonna go? For that, it's hard to make, you know, think about the success that you might have there, whether it be one or the other. It seems like, put them all and see what works. Yeah, that's not a good business plan. I don't.
I mean, uh, you can look every business from multiple perspective. How I am seeing is, it's going to be, you know, people, all that people in the downtown, uh, convenience, the convenience store will bring in customers for the restaurants too, and the restaurant, people who come in the restaurants may ha, will have an option to get gasoline too, if they want maybe a pack of cigarette, and something like that. And the, the, the gas station will be more towards the Pine Street. So, a lot of parking in and out will be on that section. The restaurant will be on the opposite side. And your question of parking makes sense, but we are also in the process of, uh, leasing parking lot to the closest what we can find.
On the parking issue, how many occupancy are you gonna have for the restaurant? What square footage gonna be?
It's going to be close to four thousand square feet, thirty-five hundred to four thousand square feet.
What would be the capacity on that?
It will be around a hundred.
That seems like a lot. Is that just the seating capacity?
Yeah.
Or the seating area?
Yeah, seating, yeah, yeah. We did some calculations inside, and, yeah.
Not the whole kitchen and everything?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's what I meant. So, you know, that's, that's always the biggest concern, you know, and, and success of where people can park and go, and like I said, downtown is about walking and parking and getting to the, your restaurant, or whatever. And it, you know, restaurant-wise, it would fit in really good with downtown, you know? There's not many gas stations downtown. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Storey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thanks for coming in, Mr. Adakari. You have how many other places like this around the state or Midwest? How many do you have?
Right now, I'm operating twenty other places, and in the process of development, four others.
So, you, in Wisconsin, you have?
In Wisconsin.
You have a number of them? How many?
Yeah.
Roughly?
All, all in Wisconsin.
All in Wisconsin. Have you had any, uh, issues, problems with, uh, noise, or police calls, or anything like that? That you, that you can bring forward?
If I say no, that's going to be false. So, once in a while, there are thefts, yeah.
You know, I think, uh, it has been brought up that maybe, you know, we'd love to see a business like this here, but, you know, the location, and you're saying that traffic is fantastic, you know, no problem, we can, we can do that. You know, we're, we're talking about a multi, uh, many apartments being built across the street, which would be more traffic than that as well. But, um, I think one of the issues that I'd have is with the gas station. Is the twenty-four seven?
No, no.
It's not?
We'll open at nine, uh, sorry, in the five in the morning, and the latest could be twelve or ten o'clock, depending on the need, yeah.
Well, that, that is one concern, I think, that people would have, that if you had a gas station, you know, a lot of people pulling in and out, you got a major apartment complex down there, um, that could be an issue. So, I think that's, some of what I've heard, some of the opposition has been partly for that. And Alder Scanell did bring up, is there another possibility that there could be something else beside, you know, the restaurant and the convenience store, which I think would be great? But if you could do something else that might, you know, take care of that. And that's one reason I think Plan Commission had a hard time, cause they were trying, they were mulling that over, and it's not, we're not going after you this way. We're just trying to see what's best fit for that area. That's all.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Alder Hutchison, then Alder Scanell?
Hi, thank you, uh, Your Honor. Um, how many individuals do you think will be working on this property when everything's up and running?
Based on my estimate, when the restaurant and convenience store are fully operational, at least thirty-five, forty.
Okay. And I'm on the Plan Commission, and we were missing three people the night we voted, so it was two and two. That was the vote. So, it just kind of, we missed our odd number. So, it could have gone either way from the Plan Commission. I'm just saying that. It is kind of a interesting issue, because it may not be what people think of being perfect for that, but is it more perfect than not being occupied at all, I guess? So, in my mind, I voted for it in the Plan Commission, because it does represent actual jobs and activity on a site that currently is not operating. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's Alder. Alder Scanell?
Yeah, I just, uh, also wanted to mention, uh, there's gonna be three gas pumps and three EV stations, correct? Yes. And the three EV stations, um, will be free to the public? For one year, we'll have it free, yes. Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that as well. Sure, yeah. Yep.
I think that's it. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Alder Campbell?
On the EV situation, I'm sure you've done a study of how many, how many EVs are in the Brown County area?
That I have not done. I just want to be honest with you. I use EV myself, yeah, but I have not done, uh, research. Mostly, we have it at festivals, and, uh, these are superchargers. Otherwise, I have not done this study. I have good knowledge about the growing demand of EV and what's happening in that industry, but as far as research, I have not done that.
So, you think we have more than one in the parking lot right now?
We will have three.
In this parking lot right now, as we speak?
I didn't pay attention.
Just, just wondering. I just, wondering where the whole EV situation is at here.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, the reality of moving forward on this.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, Director Renee Wig?
Yep, I just wanted to, to clarify, um, for the council that, uh, staff, we did, we did recommend approval of this at Plan Commission, but we also wanted the developers to provide, um, scoping documents and traffic impact analysis for some of the things you're talking about with regards to access in and out of the site. We also want a lighting plan submitted, so we can look at that. We wanted to put a maximum of three gas pumps and a max of three electric vehicle charging stations on that wall. And then basically, they have to make compliance with all the codes. So, you know, knowing that those may be issues, we want to have those as part of this recommendation as well.
Okay, that's a good point.
Sure, those matters, definitely. We'll coordinate with the city, and whatever works best, we'll go with that. We don't want to, you know, do something, and that's going to be impactful to the public. Yeah, there are some lighting issues sometimes, yeah.
And on that last point, Director, um, in terms of compliance with our codes, one thing that I was just thinking about today is whether or not this falls within that three hundred feet, um, moratorium for liquor sales. Um, I was curious if that came up? Three hundred feet of a church or a school, or maybe a couple other properties, was wondering if that came up at all? Okay. Yeah, I don't know. If, uh, Mr. Buck, if you could do a quick check on that as we're discussing, um, Divine Temple, I think is probably the closest there. Alder Galvin?
It's outside of that property?
Yeah, I think it's a little bit, a little bit out of that.
There's a daycare right there?
I don't think that's one of the prohibited properties, but. Yeah, that's, that's very close, actually. Anyway, but yeah, Mr. Buck is gonna do that research. Any other questions for our guest here? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then just state your name and address for the council, sir.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to speak, and my name is Brad Broker. I'm with Century Twenty-One Aspire Group out of Manitowoc. I'm with Century Twenty-One Aspire Group out of Manitowoc. Uh, the address of my office is eight twenty-two South Eighth Street in Manitowoc, Wisconsin. Um, and I am working with Positive or Dev, as we like to call him. And, um, I'm just here to represent that, uh, I've worked with him on many projects in and around the area, Sheboygan, Waldo, um, Manitowoc, um, other rural communities in that area. Um, Kiwanee, Green Bay, um, and, um, Door County as well, Surgeon Bay. He's got the nineteen stations. I've been involved in seven in the purchase and development with him. I am very confident that he will bring a, bring a great project to the community. He's very committed to being involved in the communities that he works in and, and is, is developing in and will bring a great project that you could be very proud of. Um, I, I did wanna reiterate that we do have some support from others' people. Um, we are very, working well right side by side with Murray Weichel with Provisions. Um, we're very proud of that development cause he's had some great involvement in the community, brought some great projects to, to the city. Um, so we have his full support and we are committed to that collaboration to make this a great project for everybody, especially the city. And when we talk about all those other concerns that, that are brought up, um, those will all be addressed to make sure that everything is in compliance with whatever the city needs. For, um, the driveway access and we, we started out asking for forty feet and we were told it could only be thirty. Um, we've, we've adjusted for that. Um, the alleyway being a concern in and out to the property, those things have been adjusted for to make it as convenient and, and safe and free flowing. Also, uh, very important to address again, I know some of these things were addressed, but the, but the idea of his headquarters being there and security cameras and the high quality gas service station and of, more importantly, the convenience store that he's offering and bringing in, everything that will be made available to the community to, to allow this to be a positive location for the community to get those on the go needs. And then, of course, the, the restaurant, uh, the Indian restaurant, um, it will be a carried on name um, that is called the Spices Bar and Restaurant, which is successfully, as he said, operating in Sheboygan. Was just recently awarded as a finalist for, uh, Best Restaurant of Sheboygan County. Um, so very high quality, very well spoken of by the community and, and all of his clients and, and supporters. Um, and, and customers, of course, and the community. So, and along with that, the restaurant or the rest, the convenience stores that he does have, um, providing a high quality service. And that's very important to him, to bring something that is high quality to the community. And, uh, that's really, really what I wanted to bring to this, that, that I am in full support of working with him and, and making sure we're bringing something positive to you.
Very good. Thanks for the testimony. Alder Storey?
Sure.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks for coming in. Um, and, you know, I have no doubt that you've done some good work and worked with him and I understand all that. I wasn't at Plan Commission. I was not around for that, but I, I was wondering if, um, are there pictures or plans or anything of other, other stores that he's had like this, other that you have?
Um, not.
We, we have site plan.
Yeah, not right with me. Um, there's been some, you know, some renderings that have been made available that were emailed to all of you. I don't know if you were able to have access to some of those.
Okay.
Um, I can get you some other, but I fortunately don't have anything immediately in front of me. But he has built from, you know, a ground up development of a similar, uh, set, setup in Sheboygan just recently, but.
Are you, are you okay with?
I can give the names of some specific places that you might be aware of.
That's fine. I, I think we could look that up.
Okay.
Do you, uh, what was I gonna ask? Um, okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Alder. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buck?
Yeah, so we mentioned about it's about six hundred and fifty feet to Da Vinci. Um, it's about two hundred and fifty feet from lot line to lot line from the Divine, it's the Divine Temple. Um, and a hundred and fifty feet from First Church of Christian Scientists. I'm not sure. I'm not super familiar with liquor licensing and how that relates to, you know, serving versus selling.
It's in our, it's in our ordinance. It, I, my understanding is you're able to operate a restaurant. You're not able to sell. Mr. Weichel?
Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, thank you. I'm Murray Weichel, uh, two oh one North Monroe, the property owner. Uh, have redeveloped the Green Bay Press Gazette building, the historic building next door. Uh, we renovated that five to seven years ago, created a hundred jobs. Uh, five nineteen, five twenty-one. Recently pre- purchased those buildings and redeveloped that, those two next door to the five thirty-three East Walnut. Just put two new businesses in there, created a number, another twenty jobs uh, there at Ella Rose Coin and, uh, the, uh, Family Entertainment Center. And we purchased, uh, the vacant, uh, bank building, Bank Mutual uh, from Associated Bank. It was vacant. It has been vacant for, uh, six years, two thousand seventeen. Uh, when we purchased the building, we put some money into it, uh, to renovate it. Uh, we, uh, have had, uh, probably fifteen or twenty different groups come through over the last year and a half. And by far, this is the best group we've had and the best fit. And I agree, uh, nothing's perfect. I'm not perfect. You're not perfect. And everything's not perfect in this world. However, this, having done, uh, development for thirty-five years in the state of Wisconsin um, and, uh, be it been here thirty years ago when my, uh, daughter, my wife went into labor, I had to fly home and deliver my, uh, first child, I know Green Bay pretty well. I worked on the first redo of Lambo, Aurora Healthcare and a lot of other projects. This, uh, is about thirty to forty jobs, a four million dollar investment. Um, there's eight owners within three hundred feet of this property of which all are in favor of this project. And there are letters I will give you from them. I'll give you letters from McDonald and Company. Very astute, uh, and good company. It's done a lot of development here in town. We have other five or six letters in support of our project. The planning staff, we compromised seven versions of this concept and they are in support of this. The city of Green Bay owns the property. Brown County owns the property. We've talked to them. We've not heard to date any concerns from the city of Green Bay, other than the compromises we made and the discussions. We've talked to over seventy residents and community members. I've heard two people to date, till today, say that they have a serious concern or not op- at least open minded to the idea. Accor- uh, according to charger.com and plugin.com, there's only one public charging station in this downtown Green Bay. We're offering three. We originally were offering one, and these are gonna be public charging stations. Right now, uh, I'm, uh, spend part of my time here in Wisconsin. Our family's from the seventeen hundred, seventeen eighty-three, seventeen eighty-four from Wisconsin and Michigan. I had served on the Mackinac Bridge Authority twenty-eight years and was chairman for ten. I, I can tell you this, in the U P and here, there's a need for this. Twenty-four percent of all cars in twenty-four and thirty-six percent of all cars in twenty-five will be electric or they'll be hybrid. We're offering the city a resource for tourism, vacationers, traveling business. I'm here all the time. It's tough to find a hotel room. It's impossible to find a charging station. We're trying to set a trend. When you go to charge a hybrid, whether you're in Green Bay, you're in the U P, you're anywhere, you wanna grab a bite to eat, you wanna grab, uh, a refreshment while your car change, charges. And by the way, if you have a hybrid, you also need some gas. So what we're doing is offering the opportunity to charge your hybrid or charge your electrical vehicle and also grab a bite to eat at a sit-down restaurant. And we're also gonna have an outdoor patio. The sponsor is gonna put their corporate headquarters here. So they, they'll have their own staff, their own family here watching over this. I also sit on the Board of Directors of Skybell, the optical security system. We sold over a million units. We're gonna put a state-of-the-art security system here watching over this property. State-of-the-art. Current zoning and master plan that was done here was done before there was any electrical vehicles or any hybrids. It's a little bit antiquated from a standpoint of, uh, they didn't really conceive the need for plug-in hybrids or electrical vehicles. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration. I'm open to questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Alder Burnett?
Chief Foltz raises here.
Yeah, Ms. Brown, uh, works, uh, uh, as property manager at the Press Gazette building and also is, is the project manager for, uh, two oh one. So she's available also.
Okay, very good. Alder Burnett?
Uh, thank you for being here, Mr. Welkow. Uh, we did receive quite a few of those emails, so I know you had expressed concern of whether the council received them in the clerk. We, we did get several, either from the clerk or directly from the.
Yeah, the clerk said to bring these letters that she was unable to, uh, provide, so I'm gonna pass these out. And then there was a, a hash for the books and the renderings. I will pass these out.
So, um, so obviously you've, you've owned this for six years, right?
I've owned the, uh, two oh one building for about, uh, a year and four months and the Press Gazette for, I have six, seven years.
The, the building in question's been vacant for six years. You've owned it for about a year and a half.
Yeah.
Uh, what, uh, how would you describe the structure of the building? So I was looking at your renderings. It looks like you're keeping the, the, I'm not gonna say anything, I'm not gonna say my personal opinion about the aesthetics of the building. Let's just leave it that, at what it's at. But, uh, regarding the, um, the building itself, is it structurally sound to kind of retrofit it for this? Is it gonna take this building down the road for quite a while?
It was built as a corporate headquarters of Bank Mutual. It's built like a tank, um, and it's very well constructed. Um, I, I call the design of, uh, the building, uh, Frank Lloyd Wrightian. Some people, uh, like the Mona Lisa, other people don't like the Mona Lisa. I would say though, this bu- building, if you look at the renderings, uh, Chairman and, uh, Alder pe- per- pe- people is that, uh, I really think what, uh, we've done, and this is just our renderings. Remember, we still have to go through site plan approval, traffic study. So if there's additional tweaks to the design or the layout, they're gonna come. All we're asking for is a simple opportunity to take it the next step. The city remains in control through the whole process. All we're asking for is to give a chance to go for it. If you don't approve it, it's over. This gentleman's going somewhere else. If you, we'll let him give a chance, then we get the next step for site plan approval and we get the next step for doing a traffic study.
So you had mentioned over a dozen interested companies, people kinda engaged with you. Could you, without, you know, divulging too much of what's proprietary, could you tell us what sorts of interests that building generated? Other banks, credit unions, office suites?
Uh, there was, uh, some churches. There was some, uh, uh, centers for the aging, um, uh, Brown County, uh, some other people, but it just was not the correct fit for the building and or those users. And a lot of those, uh, would be taken off the tax rolls. The, you know, I would say of those, about eighty percent would take the building off the tax rolls.
And then, uh, obviously there's a potential outcome that it could be torn down and build something much bigger, but that's a long drawn out process. You are the owner of the property. Is that anything that appeals to you? Or you, are you interested in developing what's there into something that could be?
If someone, if someone would wanna buy it and tear it down, uh, that, that could happen. The thing I would tell you is, the site across the street, uh, is probably made for, uh, higher density and higher, uh, height. Our site, uh, that borders it, which is a large parking lot with over a hundred spaces, would be an excellent. I've talked to the city uh, about that now and all the way back to, uh, Mayor Schmidt's, uh, time here. And that's something probably that will happen, but it's gonna be ten or twenty years down the road. There's so many sites that are available right now in downtown De- Green Bay for, uh, and there's more vacant sites than there are occupied sites. There's more square fit, footage to be built. This site is not, uh, uh, configured to be a dead site. And on the parking question, again, we control, uh, many of the lots around there, so we made sure there was ample parking. We own and control probably over a hundred and sixty spaces.
So final question, I, you know, from a business standpoint, you've, you've been in this field for a while. You've been very successful, including success in Green Bay.
Yes.
For some of us, uh, who are looking at this, at least for myself who's looking at this, you know, you look at a shipping business, uh, a restaurant, Quick Casual was a document, but the gentleman mentioned them were sit-down experience. And then a C store, uh, electrics, charging stations, gas pumps. It just seems like a lot in a, a facility that you normally, in my opinion, don't see. Is it your opinion that to make something like this work on that site, a, a retail sort of place or business arrangement, that you need multiple service lines to generate profit to make it sustainable? Is that why we see some of these?
It, it, it's interesting. Um, and, and I don't know how many people have actually been in the building, but that building is already dense. It's twenty thousand square feet. So the reason why there's so many businesses is it's a large building. It's a twenty thousand, oh, twenty-one thousand square foot building. And, uh, Ms. Brown's on the line and she can verify that, but we have it on CAD. It's a twenty-one thousand square foot building.
So given the revenue streams that that building could generate, you think that that's sustainable?
Yes.
That, that makes so.
Plus, they're gonna have their, uh, corporate headquarters there. I think it's, it's, uh, uh, an excellent plan.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks for your testimony, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, Alder Morgan?
Yes.
There are another lots we control with the Press Gazette and the other buildings that we either own or property manage.
So they won't lose those parking spots?
No, the, we're, right now, we've been very generous in allowing, uh, governmental workers, businesses to use our parking lots at below market rates. I think, uh, you know, there's actually city workers, there's judges, there's, uh, veterans that are all parking in our lots.
It's a convenient to your restaurant and everything?
Right across the street. Yeah, and there's also a parking structure nearby, but our lots are, are right across the street.
So people that walk across the street go to the restaurant?
Uh, they'd walk, uh, yeah, across the street, yeah. I think it's Cherry, so it's not that big of a busy, busy of a street. We actually donate, uh, spaces in all those lots to, uh, the churches, the library, et cetera, et cetera, at no charge for their events. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, sir. Uh, I think we have, does the, Ms. Brown wanna speak online? Okay. Ms. Brown, if you can hear me, um, feel free to state your name and address and address the council.
Thank you. Kennyata Brown. Address would be two zero one North Monroe. Um, I- Thank you. Kennyata Brown. Address would be 201 North Monroe. I work for provisions and then also the ownership of the property. I just wanted to go ahead and add some comments or clarification to some of the questions that I heard raised during this session. And so the first one was just a concern when it comes to the traffic flow of guests going to the restaurant, and then also the traffic flow of visitors to the convenience store. With this property, there are actually three main entrances into the property. I think the packet that Mr. Wyko provided to you, if you go to the sixth page of that packet, you'll kind of, you can see it there, or even on page 10. And so basically, with this is that you'll have a main entrance that is going to be right off of Cherry Street. And then the main entrance for the convenience store would be more on that Monroe Pine Street area. And then the main entrance for the shipping would be more towards the center that kind of faces the alleyway. And so all three businesses, even though it seems like they're all going to be kind of on top of each other inside this building, that's not actually the way that this building is laid out on the interior, or the way that the site itself behaves when it comes to the main entrances into the property. And then there's also a lobby area that will act as the lobby to come into the center where you can actually, you know, go in one direction to go towards the convenience store if you do enter into that center main entrance, or, you know, go the opposite direction to go to the UPS store or to the Indian restaurant. Then the other thing, I know that there seems to be some mixed feelings as far as the architectural beauty of this property. I'm not sure how many of you have actually had the experience of going on the interior of this project, but it is actually very beautiful on the inside. Big, open, vaulted ceilings with exposed large wood beams. It is a very beautiful experience on the inside of that building, which you would actually have the public being able to share within that experience, of course, with modern renovations to the project. In addition, I know we have like a render for the restaurant where we would want to also propose maybe outdoor eating as well and taking advantage of some of that landscaped area and having it as an indoor and outdoor experience. And that's also more towards the Cherry Street side, so on the opposite end of where the convenience store guests would actually be. And then, let me see here, I know that you guys received also the letters of support like Mr. Wyko mentioned as well. I think that was, oh, I did go ahead and take a look. As far as your EV stations that you already have in the Green Bay area, there's some near Lambeau Field, some near the mall, but I did not see or find any that are in your downtown location. And so to be able to, you know, have that, that means that normally people, they park their car, they have them charged, and then they go and walk and either they enjoy the restaurant or to, you know, go and grab something from the convenience store. But it also lends to just another destination, which, you know, increases the foot traffic of people, you know, parking their cars and then getting out and actually exploring the rest of downtown. But that is it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great. Thanks so much for your testimony, ma'am. Any questions? All right. It looks like we have one more, maybe in person.
Hi, I'm Kathy LaFave, 1731 East Shore Circle. And there's just a couple things I want to mention. One thing, the gentleman that spoke before, he, that building was not built by Big Mutual. It was first Northern Savings and Loan. I know because my husband and I were customers there, and we know how beautiful that building is inside. So it was built in, I think, the late 70s, I'm thinking, somewhere in there, mid to late 70s. So it's been there quite a long time. I was in the banking business up until Associated took it over, unfortunately, which I love Big Mutual. I love banking there. Anyway, okay, so then I also want to go, I think maybe you should double-check. I know technology has changed, but you're saying the gas station's going to be on Pine Street? You have less than, what, 30, 20 feet? You have childcare with a playground right there. Are you going to have issues with off-gassing of the fuel? When you have children, you have to be very careful with that. I think this is something maybe the city should look into, just to make sure, be clear on this. So I want to make sure I brought that up. I think there was one other thing, but I forgot. But I want to thank you. Oh, I know what it is. The other charging station that will be coming in will be at the Brown County Museum. I'm on the Board of Brown County Supervisors, and this is something that we're looking into putting in. So there will be some downtown, only on the other side of the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. All right, if there's no one else left to speak, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to close floor made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed, and we have a motion on the floor for approval. Alder Burnett, and then Alder Galvin.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, I support approval. You know, maybe it's not the ideal situation for many people, but we take an existing building and do something that's needed. You could argue some things maybe in that neighborhood you do not want to have, but it's a service that is needed in the downtown area. It's a proven developer. There was some interest in other entities on the property, according to the developer. The entities, some of which would require that property to likely be off the tax rolls. Of course, there's a possibility that we can tear down, that developer can choose to pursue an option to tear down that building, build something new. That's a process that could take many years and many dollars, included city dollars, in order to support such a, such a thing. And sometimes in our society in our country, we have a tendency to tear down buildings. And I just think sometimes the waste of resources that entails is a real tragedy when you consider that, according to the developer and other people, that building still has some vitality to it. So if we can have them, as condition of this permit, to repurpose it, redesign it, find something that could work for that corner, I'm definitely in favor. I think the positives far outweigh any negatives, and in this case, maybe perceived negatives, because according to all the businesses in the area, aside from one call that I got earlier today from a county supervisor with concerns about the library proximity, I think the support has been generally favorable from businesses that operate in that neighborhood. So, no. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have some questions for Attorney Bungar. Liquor laws. We know it's within 300 feet, 200 feet. Would that be in, you know, would that butt heads with our ordinances on selling liquor?
Right. So our current ordinance provides that our liquor license can't be issued for a premise within 300 feet.
Mike?
Oh, yep. So our ordinance provides that our liquor licenses cannot be issued to an establishment within 300 feet unless that requirement is waived by two-thirds vote of common counsel. So it can be overridden, but it just requires two-thirds vote.
Okay. Should the council override the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything in our ordinance that holds them to closing at 10 o'clock at night?
Our operational hours would be determined what, what state statutes provide and what our ordinance is providing, those coincide with what state statutes provide.
So basically, 24 hours a day, they could be open, selling liquor at 6 o'clock in the morning till whatever it is at night?
I'm not, I don't think they can be open, they can be open for 24 hours, but they can't sell liquor.
Right, within whatever the state limits.
Correct, correct. So they would operate just like any other convenience store or grocery store as far as like cutoff times for selling liquor or beer.
Okay. So, I mean, with the best of intentions, we give them permission. The day after they open up, they could say, you know something, we rethought this, and we're going to stay open. And there's nothing the city could do about it. Once it's issued, it's issued.
For business, correct.
Yes.
But liquor, they would have to coincide with state statutes, correct?
Yes, I agree with that.
And if they violated that, then that would be a basis for revocation.
All right. I just want to remind the council of the dental, the professional dental building on Main Street. It's, it's a nice dental building. It looks good, but the city settled for a one-story building. And there it sits. It can't be developed anymore. You can't build offices there, apartments, or anything else like that unless we tear down that building. And I'm sure that the people who own the dental office aren't going to be in favor of that, but it's very short-sighted at the time. But the thing was, well, what else are we going to do with this vacant land? And I know it's tough to sit on vacant land. I like the proposal up to the gas station. I like it. I like everything about it up to the gas station. I'm not in favor of the gas station, and I'm not in favor of liquor being sold, and I will not vote in favor of, if it comes to a two-thirds vote, I will not be in favor of that either. If we could send this back to planning and have them come back with something else without the gas station, I'd even be in favor of the charging station, because you don't necessarily need a gas station for that. That can be done with, much like with a credit card right at the site, paying for it and charging your vehicle, you know. And you could actually go in the restaurant while the vehicle's charging. You know, in fact, if the gas station's not there, they could probably increase the amount of charging stations there. But I'm not in favor of the gas station at all down there. I just don't think that it fits within what we're trying to see downtown. Thank you.
So, Alder Campbell?
My concern is with the daycare back there. That's as important as, as a school or church or anything, and that has to fall within the liquor guidelines, let alone people coming in.
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
But, but we've already established that it's within that moratorium area anyway.
Yes. But that's my biggest concern. I agree with Alder, that the gas station just doesn't fit in. I mean, like I said, I'd support the EV thing, but, you know, the alley is the only thing that separates the daycare. And I just, I just don't like the whole multi-use, one thing's going to take over the other. It's very busy. It's a well-planned out proj, project. But I, I just wonder if there's, I mean, how many people are in the planning commission? And with four people there, why wasn't the decision made to hold that and relook at that with more people? Was this whole presentation given to that? I wasn't able to watch it. I surely would have to catch up on all this, but this is a lot to consume and vote on and pass, especially how busy this project is. And I just wondered if there can be a motion made to send it back for better, for the commission to do the job versus putting it all right to a vote right here, right now. I mean, there's a lot of things here that need to be worked out. Again, I've been to several RDA meetings, and I've learned a lot about them, and this seems to like fall in that crack of four people. Four people should have went, wow, this is a huge decision. How do we get this to council? How, how do we, how do we say anything on it? Two, four people? This should go back. And if there's a motion that I can make to send it back, I'm, I'll make the motion.
You can make that motion.
I'll make a motion to send this back to the planning commission with, with more, more to it here. I mean, I got my whole desk full of paperwork here trying to catch up.
Alder Campbell makes...
This is, this is just for a vote.
Alder Campbell makes a motion to refer this item back to the planning commission. It was seconded by Alder Galvin. Additional comments or questions? Alder Eck?
Yes, so I just want to clarify the fact that it is, the liquor moratorium, how does that affect that? I mean, you said it would have to be overridden, but say it's not. Then what happens in that?
They're not able to sell liquor.
Okay. And then, that would be then a question for the proprietor, whether he'd want to move forward, correct?
Potentially, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Wery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one I've kind of, I watched the meeting. Some of the video didn't work correctly. You might want to look at that. So, but I caught, I caught most of it. Kind of gone back and forth on this one myself. A lot of positives, but some definite negatives. I certainly hear the comments about the one-story building that slipped through when it's a pretty valuable piece of property there. This probably should go back. I didn't hear any comments about the off-gassing and the daycare next door. I didn't catch any commentary about that. I'd be curious about that. I know a traffic study was talked about, but it's not yet completed. The liquor sales at the convenience store, that's a tricky one, because while you might get a passing vote tonight, you're going to need an eight out of 12 of this body to get the liquor sales. And if that's a key component of your business, you might want to consider if there's support for that, because I've seen, I think, one go through, and that was Mason Brothers or Dow on the West Side when they added alcohol, and it was right by St. Joe's Church. And I think that one passed eight to four. It was a tough vote. You know, it's been fine since then, but it's not an easy, an easy decision. So this might need a little bit of work. I'm still, I'm intrigued by it. It really, it looks like a creative reuse, but as some of the other Alders mentioned, it might need a little bit of work yet. So thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Any comments from Community and Economic Development on this off-gassing question? No? Okay. Alder Store?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for staff. The authenticity plan's been out there for some time, and I know we've talked about that quite a bit in the past. How close are we to the plan with some, a development like this? And I know you talked, staff supported this plan, or this, this particular project right here, and I'm just wondering how that fits in.
Sure. Thank you, Alder. So the authenticity plan does designate Monroe. In this area of Monroe, the recommended uses are retailers, home goods stores, specialty food stores, personal services, medical care providers, business services such as Federal Express, Kinko's, professional services. It does, without boring you with reading all of it, it does talk about converting Monroe into more of an urban and pedestrian corridor, although it would still have four-lane traffic movements. It doesn't explicitly talk about gas stations, but it does, but it does imply that it is an urban-type environment with a lot of lanes, a lot of auto lanes. So as far as the uses go, you know, the retailer, the personal service business, the restaurant would all be uses that, that were contemplated for this corridor. Gas station was not mentioned.
Right. I think with the, speaking of bringing it back, I think it's a good one, partly because there are a couple of threads out there, the whole thing with alcohol sales, the daycare, lighting, all the, other various elements that were talked about. I think a lot of us on council might be interested in a project like this, but I think there's just a couple of unanswered questions, and I think if this development is going to succeed or go through, I think those need to be answered. So I, I'm in support of sending it back as well.
All right. Any other comments on that motion? Alder Scannell and Alder Burnett?
Yeah, I'm not sure sending it back does much, but I'll support that. If I had to, well, we're just talking about sending back, so I don't know if all my other comments would be out of order. Probably.
I don't know until you say them.
Yeah, well, let's just say that if, well, I can clarify this, that a lot of the things that Alders have raised, the lighting and the traffic and so on, we're not approving that now. If we approve this, that still needs to be worked out and approved. So sending it back to planning, I don't know that planning's going to work that out. They're going to just send this back to us and say, you know, I don't know that they can bring up the liquor license. They won't bring it up, but perhaps Mr. Wyko and Mr. Adikari will want to rethink things through. For me, right now, if I had to vote on this, even though I really appreciate both Mr. Adikari and Mr. Wyko for what they're doing, I think this is a quality program, project. both Mr. Adikari and Mr. Wykel for what they're doing, I think this is a quality program, that project. It's what you look for from a development, the quality, and I think it's there. But unfortunately, it's trying to fit a, a round peg in a square hole. Its location and the, and the gas pumps. It's, uh, the majority of people I have spoken to, even though there is support for it, the majority that I have spoken to and heard from do not support it. But if it goes back to planning and Mr. Adikari can rethink some things and, uh, uh, reengage the community and see if there's, you know, can whip up some more support. Um, but I believe when this comes back to us, there will still be dangling ends that will need to be further, so even if we approve this now, this doesn't, this project doesn't begin right away. There's still other issues that need to be worked out. So just wanted to make that clear. But I'll, I'll support sending it back. Thanks.
Alder Burnett?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. I can get on board with sending it back. When we talk about, when I was mentioning service lines or revenue, these sorts of places really, in a lot of cases, rely on liquor sales. And we are a drinking city. I, I don't like that part of our culture. I think we got a lot of alcoholism issues that are causing a lot of societal problems. So my, my main hesitation on this would be, uh, the, the access of alcohol at yet another establishment downtown. I'm a libertarian at heart, so I think that people have freedom and rights, but when we see some of the societal issues there, uh, it, it led me to kind of pause that. But then, uh, to refer back is to let the developer know, like, our intention or our understanding that it would be hard to get eight votes out of twelve to pass, uh, the ability to sell alcohol. And in their plans, I think there was a beer cave or beer cove or something. So there is part of the preliminary plans that calls for alcohol sales. And so my hope is that if, if they go and reconvene and go before the plan commission, if they're really into this, maybe they could find a plan B to not sell alcohol. And I don't know if that's a possibility, given some of the, uh, business pressures places are feeling. You need multiple business lines, you bump multiple revenue sources in order to make a development like this to, to work. So rather than risking voting it down tonight, I will be more than happy to support referral and let the plan commission work this out. And hopefully staff can engage with the developer and see if, uh, the possibility of not selling alcohol is viable for them to move forward.
Thanks, Alder. Any other, Alder Grant?
For the clerk, do we even have any liquor licenses available? I know there's the ten thousand dollar ones, but I thought for a few meetings we were, our liquor licenses were maxed out. Is that, are we still at that same?
So we currently have three licenses available, um, that are Class B licenses because there are unlimited amount of Class A license, licenses. Class A means that you are a liquor store. Class B means you drink it there on premise. Um, and we have twenty some odd reserved licenses. We've actually, I think, sold one or two already. You're welcome.
Other questions? Our motion is referral back to the planning commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and that item is, uh, referred back. We're on to Q seven. Uh, and this is again, to amend the city's official map by removing multiple roadways and adding an extension of Hinkle Street. So back to the item that we had the, uh, the public hearing on. Entertained a motion here. Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Stevens. Comments? Alder Eck?
Um, so, uh, Mr. Bader was unable to attend, um, so he asked me to read an email he sent. So I'm just going to go ahead and do that now. Uh, "Good evening to you all. Thank you for being here tonight. I apologize that I'm unable to attend as I was called out of state for a real estate developer summit tied to a new store rollout across the state at which I'm work, currently working. I seek your approval this evening of this requested map amendment and right-of-way vacation so we can continue to move forward with the design and permitting. The requests in front of you tonight are the first official actions being requested of a broad plan, six years in the making, to, one, improve access in this area, two, elevate commercial development opportunities along the Mason Street corridor, and three, open up new residential development just north of the existing Beaver Dam Park. Highlights of this broad project include the following. Creating new commercial development along Mason Street west of the Verizon store, calming and redirecting existing north-south traffic between Mason Street and West Point Road, including the addition of bike lanes and sidewalks to improve non-vehicular travel, building thirty-five to forty new single-family residential homes, all market-rate housing, along the extended Hinkle Street behind Verizon and Chili's, planned as a condominium community with valuation starting at four hundred thousand and donating over twenty acres of property to the city to expand Beaver Dam Park in exchange for roughly one acre of parkland on which the extended Hinkle Street will connect to the existing Hobart Drive. The many approvals needed for this entire plan are currently being sought from the city in various committees and will continue to occur over the coming weeks and months. Please know that we are not approving specific design items tonight, only the general routing of the new Hinkle Street and the removal of the unbuilt Bellwood Lane. Through a recent meeting with the MacArthur Heights Neighborhood Association and neighbors in the immediate area, I was able to listen to those who live nearby and look forward to continued discussions. In a neighborhood where no, um, appreciable change has occurred in over forty years, I appreciate that changes I'm proposing could be uncomfortable for some. I promise to continue meeting with residents as roadway design evolves, assuming that these same residents are willing to work with me and trust me in this process. I've worked hard to build a solid reputation in this city and am hopeful that this council has faith in me once again to put the interests of the city of Green Bay at the very front of any project I undertake and approve these requests tonight. The positives of what this overall project can accomplish far outweigh any fears and I will work to assure this as we move forward."
Thanks, Alder. Other comments on this item? Seeing none, Alder Hutchinson?
Just a point of information, um, if you're looking at the packet, the figures that are shown with this item are incorrect. Um, the correct figure, as far as I understand, is on item BB dat, uh, three. We have one more vote on this tonight. And BB three, that data shows the street coming and varying ninety degrees to the other existing street. And it's protecting a greenway of trees that the neighbors were interested in. Okay, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Attorney Bunker, do we need to do anything about that to make sure it's clear that?
That we're going to vote on. So this is the plan commission, city official map.
It lists that the new intersection of Extended Hinkle and Hobart Drive be mapped at a ninety-degree, so it says it, but I know the, the guy, the illustration.
Exactly, that's exactly correct. It says it, but it didn't quite show it on this item.
On the agenda item.
Yeah, but it does show it on the BB three agenda item. The ordinance.
So the language is accurate, the attachment is not?
Is not.
Okay. But as long as the language is accurate.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That item has been approved. And now we're on to finance committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately. Seeing none. All in favor will, oh.
I'm sorry, uh, it was personnel. I apologize.
Okay. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and that item has, or, um, report has been approved. Report of the park committee? Motion to approve by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Scannell. Item's here to be handled separately. None. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and that report has been approved. Personnel committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Item's here to be handled separately. Item three. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item three. Motion to hold, uh, made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scannell. Item was, uh, pulled by Alder Burnett.
Yeah, I think Alder Galvin and I are probably thinking alike here. Um, Director Ellen Becker would like to be here when we discuss this. I had expressed some objections at the committee level, not, not against filling the position. I just felt like it was, should be a budget decision, like during our normal budget process. So out of respect for her and the fact that she knows her, um, desires and filling this position better than anyone else perhaps, uh, I think it would be appropriate to hold.
Very good. We're going to hold this over till our next common council meeting, is that?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. And this item has been held over to our next common council meeting. On to the report of the public arts commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. Item's here to be handled separately. Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. TBNP? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item's here to be handled separately. Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and that report has been approved. Report of the sustainability commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Equal Rights Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Discussion here? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Landmarks? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Um, and we do have a gentleman who would like to speak. Motion open the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. And the floor is open for Kevin Gracialny. What's that?
Teacher's always got it wrong.
Yeah, it's a tricky one. Yeah, if you could just state your name and address for us.
Um, I'm Kevin Gracialny. Um, address eleven seventy-two Atrium Court, DePere, Wisconsin. Um, so North Maple, I actually just closed on this property yesterday. Um, and I've heard rumblings about, um, from the city inspector that there's been interest in making this a historical property. Um, so I wanted to understand what, and I spoke to someone, um, to understand what the costs and benefits were. Um, so I'm, I'm in, I provide housing. And, and I have bought properties from, I don't mean any offense, but I, I bought properties from Sunlords and I've put hundreds of thousands of dollars into my properties here in Green Bay. And, and that's my intention is to provide good, safe, reasonable cost housing where hopefully I don't lose too much, but it's a long-term investment, right? So, um, specifically for this, I, I'm not in favor of having it be a historical, um, um, building. And so in, inside the walls, if it is a historical building, and you may already all know this, I, I learned yesterday, so I'm sharing it in case it's new information, um, is, uh, inside the walls, I can update it, maintain it as I like. So the, any exterior improvements would be proposed to the historical society and then it's either approved or declined. My hand is not forced to any contractors that could increase my, that's my concern, is the increasing potential increased cost of renovations. Um, so if we're on, if what I want to do, if I want to update windows or whatever, then, and they're fine with it, they get the stamp of approval, it makes no difference to me. There's no incremental increased cost. The, the constraint is, um, if, if I want to do something, and, and I try to be as, as um, reasonable and fair and smart and, and whatever's kind of relevant to the property, right? So, um, for example, in the front of the building, there's a pillar that's at an angle. That needs to be corrected, right? It's, it's not, um, straight. So I've got a contractor, um, Bobbers Construction that they're on there, they're talking to the inspector because it's flagged from the city level, and they're talking with them. They've submitted plans and those plans were put on hold to straighten and secure this pillar because of this going into historical. And I'm not a contractor, so I kind of lean on them a bit. Um, but it sounds like we could properly secure and maintain those front porches for fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, but if it's historical, depending on kind of how far that could change, um, it could be, he was saying depending on exactly what materials we'd have to get, whatever else. He said it could be ten thousand dollars to, to correct that instead of straightening and securing it, right? So that, that's my concern and whether it being part of the historical, um, being a historical property is a stronger weight than the cost of the owner. Um, I suppose that's, you know, up to you. Um, but as the one kind of paying that bill, I would like to keep, uh, keep it off the historical record. Um, it is a four-unit building as this may be relevant. It's a four-unit building. They're all two bedrooms. Um, it is fully rented. Um, my intention is to correct everything that the city inspectors have itemized as need to be corrected. Uh, the stairs in the back, I have no idea how that's going to change. So I'm trying to keep this concise.
Your, your three minutes have expired.
Understood.
Um, but if there are questions from council?
Sure.
Uh, Alder Galvin?
Has, has anyone from the city, uh, from the preservation group or, or anything talked to you or met with you? I mean, you just closed on it, right?
Yesterday.
Okay.
And the sellers, they sent me this letter that carried in here.
Okay. So you closed on it yesterday, but, but you've already had a contractor coming out to do work on it prior to closing?
Correct. So we signed an offer to purchase the end of June, middle or the end of June. And so the items that were listed on the city, they had lined up with a contractor to fix the pillar. Um, and, um, I don't imagine the previous owners were as, um, ambitious to tackle all the items.
Sure.
So, but, um, so they had lined up, that, you know, they're getting the seventy-five-dollar reinspection fees. They were like, hey, can you take this over? And I'm like, I'm buying it as is, so it's, I'll take it on. Um, so I gave the, even though I hadn't closed yet, I gave the green light to Bobbers Construction to.
Has, has anyone from, okay, well, my suggestion would be to meet with the city. I, I know that there's grant money out there to offset some of these costs incurred by homeowners like you. And, I mean, we have a lot of cool historical buildings, but this one is from the original Fort Howard.
Yeah.
So I mean, that kind of, to me, puts it up, up quite a bit on the, you know, the ratchets it up. It's important to our community. And, and I, I almost, I almost feel bad that you got into buying this without anyone telling you. It, it kind of seems disingenuous in a way that no one lets you know about what you were getting into. Um, but I, I would, you know, I, I mean, because I'm not, I'm inclined to, to put this forward to become an historical site or a historical building or recognized as such. Um, but I would strongly encourage you to meet with the city and see what things are out there.
I did. So, or yesterday, yesterday I met with, uh, um, after signing documents. Um, so, which it, it doesn't kill the deal, you know, I'll just, if my cost is higher, then I'll just eat it, you know? But, um, so the, it, on a local level, so there's the local level. Uh, there are no grants from the historical district or historical organization um, to assist with any potentially higher costs. Well, there's no, there's a ten, there's up to a ten thousand dollar loan at two percent interest. But it, it's still a loan, you know, I, I got to pay it back. So there's no way to offset the cost. It just kind of delays it, you know? And, and I understand the, the, um, the appreciation for a building that, from Fort Howard, you know, I, it's not nothing.
You could charge for tours.
What's that?
You could charge for tours.
Yeah, multiple streams of revenue, there you go.
Well, and, and I'm not sure if, if, if you. Well, and, and I'm not sure if, if you got the low, I mean, if there's, I, I thought there was state money. I thought there was federal money out there, national money. I mean, I'm just, and I don't know for sure. But I mean, you know, I'm sure the city would work with you to try and find out if there are any other sources that you could tap into to try and offset your costs.
And I think the distinction is this is our local registry.
Okay.
It's not the state or federal.
I'd have to put it as a national-type registry. The gentleman that I spoke to at the local level, he said that it, as, as, for a local historical building, very relevant, but from like a national-type level, it's less so. At least that's what he said.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate you looking at the structure. I've been inside of it several times. I, I was on the Landmarks Commission and Preservation Committee and all sorts of stuff. So, there, there is some inherent value. In fact, there had been some talk at one time about maybe moving that building over to the old Larson Canning Site, you know, as a kind of a reference building of sorts, kind of a museum. I think that, that kind of was put by the wayside. But it was built, I think, in the mid eighteen thirties. You know, it's, it's been around a long time. So, it was historic where it was located. Then they moved it when the railroad came through in the eighteen sixties. And, so it's been on that property for over a hundred sixty years or more. So, you've probably heard some of that already, but I, I feel, I mean, did you talk to anybody on the Landmarks Commission at all? You know, like, there's architects on that committee. There's a lot of folks that have some skill sets. And I, I'd be more than willing to put you in touch with the number of folks that could talk about the angles of, you know, restoring and, and maybe, maybe it's not as bad as you think. So, I, I don't know. I'm willing to work with you on that. So, there should be some things out there. I would think the state would be very interested. I mean, Green Bay is considered the oldest community in the state, you know, so I think, I think that Madison would, would jump on something like this. And I'm just guessing. So, I, I'd be willing to work with you on that. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Alder Ek?
I, I'm just wondering, so before you purchased the property, you were not aware that this was a historical home?
I talked to the sellers. They, they mentioned that, you know, the Historical Society has had an appetite for pretty much the whole time they've owned it, which has been a long time.
Okay.
To, to bring it in that way. And, so then, the, the only other individual besides them that I spoke to was the, the inspector that, you know, has the items flagged from the city level. And, he said that there's serious interest from that organization to, to, you know, bring this in. And, and I asked him to, you know, please dissuade that, and I didn't know exactly what the costs or benefits were, which is why, you know, didn't want to push it forward until I, I at least understood more. And the cost seemed to be less than what I was originally concerned about, but still, very likely scenarios where my costs are going to be higher, or anyone else who owns it in the future. And, and after talking to the, the gentleman, part of the Historical Society, the, the lack of funds to assist with this stuff, per what he said, from a local level at least, is, is just going to be kind of on me, which is what I, and, and there's going to be times, you know, if I want to put in windows or redo the siding if it gets too far gone or whatever, that there's going to be, yeah, you want to replace siding, cool, yeah, great. But it's just stuff like the pillar that could be much higher than what I could get it done for safely, reasonably, you know? That's just, yeah. Sorry, I kind of drew a little bit.
No, it's all right. It just, it's unfortunate the timing of it all, I think.
Yeah, well, happens in business, you know?
Thank you.
One, one question for staff, real quick. Director Ruineir Wig. Is there any possibility of eligibility for curb appeal?
Yeah, we were just, Dave and I were just talking about that. We do have a curb appeal program that you could apply for, that, for that exterior on the facade stuff.
Okay.
So, we can talk about that. But, you know, first of all, thank you for buying that house. That's been a problem property for the city. And our concern was that it was in such a state that we thought it was going to get to the point where it might have to be torn down. So, thank you for buying it and fixing it up. I think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood, so. And I, speaking just from personal experience of having to go through landmarks for remodeling my house in Astor, there's been actually some things that have been cheaper to do than replacement. Because if you're repairing or, or keeping things the way they are, you don't even really need to go to landmarks. You know, staff can make those calls on some of those things. So, I think you might be surprised on some of the stuff you're looking at. It might actually be cheaper than replacing it, so.
Thank you.
That's my two cents.
Sure.
And, Mr. Gracialny, you, you have a contact with the city that you, you've been in touch with, or, or not?
I believe so. There is a Stephanie that, yeah. So, if she is part of that Historical Society.
Yeah, so I, yeah, just, I continue engaging with her and then also, you know, ask, maybe ask about the curb appeal program, because I think this is in an eligible census tract, so I want to take a look at that. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Floor's closed. We have a motion on the floor to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved, or that report has been approved. Couple informational items, building report and municipal court report for June, onto resolutions. No, no. Resolutions.
A motion to suspend it.
There we go.
The rules from the ceiling.
You got it. Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these resolutions with one rule called vote. Is there a second for that? Second by Alder Ek. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to resolve on the resolution.
I'm sorry. We probably need to limit it to a few, given previous action. So, I think we would want to do everything but item four.
Oh, four, right. Okay. Motion to suspend the rules for all items except item four.
Second. Seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor of that motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin, and we will use the board. And those are approved unanimously.
Motion to hold item four.
Or, just hold it? Is that the right motion, Attorney Bungert?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Hold till our next council meeting. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been held. Onto ordinances, first reading.
Motion to...
You really should probably address oh-six before the ordinances.
That's what I asked.
Yeah, and I didn't make that connection. So, it should, it should be taken up unless you could adopt the ordinances, move on to oh-six.
Right.
And then go back.
Right. Okay. What, what's the best way to do that?
Yes, motion to amend the agenda to take up oh-six.
Right now. Alder Scannell makes a motion to amend the agenda to take up oh-six prior to ordinances for first reading, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. So, we are on oh-six, and I'm going to go to Attorney Bungert first.
Thank you. I just wanted to give kind of a little bit of a synopsis of where this piece of legislation originated and kind of just clarify and lay out the landscape a little bit clearly as far as what the purpose of the ordinance is, what it does, what it doesn't do, before we get into further discussions, just to kind of set the parameters. So, this originated, I want to say, two or three years ago, from a communication from Alder Steyer, which was then referred to the Law Department by, by common council to draft. We actually, at the time, were severely understaffed, so we actually hired outside counsel from Boardman and Clark to help us drafting, because it was such a heavy lift, putting together such a robust ordinance. And then, with additional new hires, our, our team was able to kind of get it over the finish line with additional changes and, and, and input from, from committee and from council. So, the, the purpose of this ordinance is essentially to regulate massage establishments as a business by requiring such businesses to obtain a license to operate in the city. And then, the ordinance obviously sets forth certain guidelines, rules, parameters by which such businesses need to operate within, much like liquor licensed establishments. So, there's licenses for the operators, the bartenders, and then there's operating, there's a license for the business itself, right, to be able to operate and function within the city. It doesn't impose any additional restrictions or duplicative regulations on the therapists themselves in their professional or individual capacity. So, massage therapists as a profession are regulated by the state. They have to obtain licensing through the state. That still is in play. This isn't imposing additional regulations upon them. It is imposing certain boundaries and regulations on the business that employs them. So, that's a very, very important distinction. There are a number of other municipalities that have ordinances like this in, in place. Specifically, we looked at City of Kenosha and Madison. Madison's is actually a lot more robust than ours. But we, we looked at both of their structures as, as basically a starting point for when we were drafting ours. So, these are, you know, ordinances that are utilized in other, in other communities. Again, the purpose of the legislation is to ensure that the establishments are, are operating in a safe, in a safe manner, are safe for patrons, safe for surrounding neighborhoods and districts, and are essentially lawful businesses, lawful business enterprise partners for, for the greater community. Ultimately, this is a legislative directive, so it's entirely up to council whether you wish to establish these regulations and regulate this type of activity. But essentially, it will give, give the city more authority to ensure that, that such businesses are, are functioning properly within, within the city.
Very good. All right. Any comments from council before we open the floor? Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The reason why I pulled this is I received a phone call from someone that was very concerned about this. And it, it kind of piqued my interest that although we're not relicensing on them in any way, we are charging a fee to the business, but in many cases, these are owner-operated businesses. So, and in fact, it's the one person working for the company that's again paying a fee. They're doing a legitimate job, and it was, as it was expressed to me, there's already checks and balances that the state has in place, that if those were merely enforced by the city, some of this regulation could be avoided. And so, I agreed to pull it and hold it so that those people could come and express their, their concerns. Now, my motion would be to send this back to committee after they listen to what these people have to say. And if there's a way of working this ordinance out so it's more palatable for them, that's what I'd like to see in the end.
Have you followed the discussion at committee at all?
A little bit, yes.
Because there's, there's been a lot of discussion.
Well, and, but it was my understanding, many people weren't able to make that meeting who wished to express their concerns. And so, that's why I pulled it here so that they could do that also.
Right.
I, I certainly understand the concern of the committee. We don't want to rehash things like, oh, like some other items that we have in the past, you know, past, it should be, but I thought they deserved to have the opportunity. If they didn't last time, to be able to express their concerns this time. Thank you.
Any other comments before opening the floor? Alder Campbell?
Just a clarification from Ms. City Attorney Bungert. So, the state regulates the licenses on these?
On the, on the therapists themselves, correct. As far as, you know, their practice, the licensure, their educational requirements, things like that. But the state doesn't regulate the business itself. Operational hours, you know, other space requirements, compliance with our zoning and building codes, those types of things. The state doesn't regulate that.
But, so we don't have an ordinance to, it would be a state violation if they did it, but the city?
No. So, the state just requires them to have, the therapist itself is required to have a license to be able to practice massage or bodywork therapy. We have an ordinance, we, we codify that requirement under our ordinance. So, if somebody is performing bodywork therapy without a license from the state, we can give them a citation for that. This goes further, because this is operating, this is regulating the entire business and making sure that the business is operating in a lawful manner. And if it doesn't, then we have the ability to be able to go in and get compliance or declare it a public nuisance if, if it's not operating in accordance with our laws and regulations.
So, is, so does in the future that we require the state licensed person to be like?
That's not our requirement. The state requires that each therapist have its license.
But, we have no record of that in, in our city system?
We would only, we, we don't have any records of, of the license. It, it would essentially be, you know, compliance track frequently. You know, there's, you know, there could be an incident at, you know, or complaint that, that's brought in. Community police officers, you know, investigate and then can, can see whether the, the persons that are, that are working there are licensed or not.
So, how does a chiropractor license fall? Is it very similar to this, not regulated?
I'm, I'm not positive, but I think medicinal licenses or license for, for medical professionals is, 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 it is licensed by the state, obviously, because there's a medical board. But I think there's, there's additional, it, it's a separate office or a separate department that I believe regulates it.
I mean, getting into the whole, the whole health plan trend, you know, I mean, is, is this where the city does have to create more and look at almost every branch of that type thing, like CBD license, I'm sure, how do we regulate that? Do we, is that a state thing? Or do we need to have a little more control on all these different things? Because they all don't fall under the same thing.
Right. That might be a, a different tangent from what we're looking at here.
I'm just kind of comparing. If, if there's something to compare it to is, is what I'm trying to support.
The easiest thing I can compare it to is liquor licensing.
Yeah, okay.
Essentially where we are, except the difference is we, we do license the, the operators themselves. But it's a license that we are providing to the business to be able to sell alcohol, right? And they have to comply with certain regulations, for example, like they can't, you know, they can't be open after a certain timeframe. They have to have security cameras. They have to ensure that they're going to, they're going to cooperate with police department and provide video, have ID scanners, have all those types of things.
Customers, literally customers have to be of age.
Correct, correct. And so, it's, it's an agreement essentially that we will allow you to operate in our, in our city, contingent on the fact that you agree to follow these rules, right, to make sure that this is safe for everybody.
And then, who is held liable? The, the, the business owner, or the?
Correct, yes.
Call it doctor, just for the, the care person.
Yep, the, the owner of the establishment.
So, they would be like a bartender also, is a, someone, well, it's a little different, but, you know?
But that, that liquor licensing situation is the most, is the best analogy.
I mean, if they hurt them, you know, broke, broke something or whatever, I mean...
So, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't, we're not concerned with so much with, again, their practice and their licensure with, with respect to the work that they're doing for their clients. That is beyond our realm. That's something that the state licenses and regulates.
That's good. That's good you clarified it, thank you.
Right. We're concerned with the four walls.
Thank you.
All right. Ready to open the floor? Motion to open the floor made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. I have a few names here of individuals who'd like to speak, so I'm going to read them off. And then, once I get to the, the end of that, if, if... so I'm going to read them off, and then once I get to the, the end of that, if, if there are still others that would like to speak, you can feel free to approach the podium. But first I have Stacy Barden. And then, if you could just state your, your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name's Stephanie Seonda. I'm 1527 South Douglas Street, Appleton, Wisconsin. I have a mobile massage therapy practice. And I was thinking about opening a establishment here in Green Bay. Number one, while I appreciate the information from the legal counsel, it is on record that the committee said this ordinance was to prevent prostitution and illicit massage services. So I believe it is a discriminatory stance to create this ordinance based on that. I actually called the city council yesterday. I tried to call them last week, didn't get a message back. Got the, talked to somebody yesterday, and it seems like there's a difference in interpretation of the state law for massage therapy. 460.17 states that no city or ordinance can regulate massage therapy. That's the first part of the statute. The second part has A and B. So the second part states that a city can create an ordinance for people acting unlicensed. Then, the part B says that law enforcement is responsible at providing that authority to discipline people who are acting without a license. So, to me, you know, it's highly offensive, you know, that we, it's, it's been in news articles. It's, you can find it on, online. The Green Bay City Council has already stated, it's been made public, that this ordinance is to prevent prostitution. That's why I believe it's discriminatory. It is also a duplicate because every, all the information that's listed in the ordinance, like, that's information we provide to the state. Now, maybe from the state level, we can have them include our establishment license, or our establishment address on the state website for license lookup. That way, when you look up somebody's name, it'll also show their establishment license. Another option to regulate it is to have malpractice insurance, send you a list of everyone who is covered under malpractice certificate and active standing. Maybe create an ordinance that says anyone not in active standing is subject to inspection and fine, something along those lines. But we're asking collectively that this ordinance include massage therapy as exempt. I believe we can end the night short, because that's pretty much what all of us want here, is to have it exempt. And a couple of other things, you know, I heard legal counsel talk about saying, oh, people under a certain age can't enter. Again, discriminatory. It's a bias and a stereotype. A lot of us here are trained with accredited, board certified education to work on pediatrics. Another thing is, a lot of times, we are assaulted. We are solicited by people, and when we call the police department, they don't even come and take a report. They basically say, do you have evidence of it? Well, we can't, because of HIPAA, we can't have video cameras. We cannot record. You know, there's things that we can't do because of HIPAA. And so it's like, you know, we, we need that help from the police department. I'm also an occupational therapist. If I had the same thing happen as an OT, and I work at a skilled nursing facility in Green Bay, they have a, a police officer there in two minutes. We're still healthcare professionals. Why is it that, as a massage therapist, if I'm harassed or, or assaulted, we don't even have anyone come and take a report? They just like completely ignore us. But yet, the city wants to regulate massage therapy for the pretense to eliminate human trafficking and prostitution, which we are for, and we will work with the city in whatever way possible. If you want all of our malpractice insurance, we'll create a Google Doc. We'll get it to you in a couple of days. That way you can start verifying this, this legitimacy. Some of the other things historically, so 2013, that's when the state brought in state level massage licensing. Before that, people were grandfathered in. 2013 was the year that it was like, this is the final time. No one, everyone after this has to have a national board certified exam that they pass. Before that, they didn't require it. So before 2013, everyone had a city ordinance. That's how it worked. After 2013, it was supposed to go to a state level. The state created 460.17 that says no city or ordinance can regulate massage therapy because cities and towns were discriminating against massage therapists. They were placing stereotypes and biases against us for our profession. So this ordinance is a parody. There's no other healthcare profession that has this same establishment license arbitrarily applied to them. It is also preemptive to our scope, like, limiting the age of a patron that can come see us, or, you know, things along that nature. We are not doing that to other healthcare professionals. Like, why are we doing it to us? I'm a licensed healthcare profession. To have my profession associated with prostitution, which also, I'm not sure why massage therapy is being targeted, because if I'm aware, there are no licensed massage therapists that have been penalized or arrested for prostitution in the Green Bay area. So, as an OT, we do risk assessment. From a risk assessment standpoint, we're zero risk, our profession. So why do we have to arbitrarily face these fines, face this scrutiny, face the, the misconception of our profession? You know, the, the inspections, the, those kind of things, you know, we have, we have HIPAA to uphold to. Like, you can't come and inspect our office when we have somebody on the table. Like, nobody else can be in that room.
Ma'am, your three minutes have, have expired. Attorney Bungart, do you have anything?
Any questions?
To respond to, and then we'll go to questions.
Sure. Just one point of clarification. As far as the, the conversation that I was having with Alder Campbell regarding underage persons, that was regarding liquor licenses, not this ordinance. This ordinance doesn't, it, it does have that, but minors essentially have to come in with a parent. That's all. But the, the reference that I was making with Alder Campbell was regarding a regulation that is placed on liquor license holders to ensure that people are of age. Secondly, I agree with you. Chapter 460 does state that no, no city or village or town can, can enforce an ordinance that prohibits or that regulates the practice of massage therapy. But what I had, had indicated in my, in my opening statements is that this ordinance doesn't regulate the practice. It regulates the business. It regulates the hours that it's run. It ensures that the business owner will cooperate with the police. It ensures that zoning and other health, you know, zoning and building code restrictions are, 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 regulations are being followed. It's, it's all with respect to the running of the business, not at all on how the massage therapist practices their craft.
So what other healthcare professions are also under the same, again, it's a parody?
Okay. Questions from counsel? Yeah, Alder.
Thank you, Stephanie, for coming in. So you mentioned you are in Appleton, not Green Bay at this point.
I do mobile massage therapy. Actually work on NFL players, performers, so I work in their homes. But it is a need for me to open up a practice because there's some who, like, right now in training camp. They don't have their leases yet until the preseason starts. And so it would be beneficial for me to have an actual establishment that I can work out of and, you know, instead of having to go to hotels or things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Alder Hutchinson?
Okay, are you certified?
Yes, licensed. I, I have, I was licensed in Arizona before I was licensed here. So, and I, I could tell you in Arizona, they don't have anything like this.
Right.
And, you know, Arizona's had their license a lot longer, but I've been licensed for 18 years now. Part of that in Arizona and part of that here.
Okay. So do you ha, do you have to re-register every year?
Every two years. It's biannually, but our malpractice insurance, it's a $2 million benefit, I guess. But it's every year. It's about $260, if not more.
Okay, and then you have proof that you're certified and registered with a plaque or a card?
Yes, and we have to list our address and our landlord under additional insured on our malpractice insurance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alder Morgan?
If you were to establish a building in Green Bay, what would this ordinance be other than costly? If you were to establish a building in Green Bay, in a business, how would your business be hurt other than costing you $75 by us having this ordinance?
So, first of all, to me, the discriminatory fact, for the last few meetings, we were associated with prostitution. So to me, it's like a hard no, because if we pay for that license, then we're assuming that massage therapists are prostitutes. And in this case, zero massage therapists have been fined or penalized or, or accused of acting unprofessionally.
Alder, do you have a question?
Attorney Bungart could respond to the, the comment about them signing the, if they sign up for the license, that means they're admitting to being prostitutes.
Application for the license is essentially just asking for permission to be able to operate within the city. That's, that's, that's the purpose of the ordinance. I didn't attend the last Production Policy Committee, so I wasn't there for those comments. I understand that a, there has been a growing trend in our community for massage establishments to be operating in the city that aren't legitimate. And so, one of the resulting, I guess, resulting, well, one of the results, I guess, of, of this ordinance is to ensure that those unlawful businesses don't operate within the city. But it's not equating in any way the practice of, of bodywork therapy or, or massage therapy with prostitution. It's just a growing concern that, that Alders have raised as far as illegitimate businesses or unlawful businesses, problem businesses that are, are popping up all over the community. And this is a mechanism that has been used by other municipalities within the city without any, without any legal challenges, constitutional or otherwise, as an effective way for a municipality at a local level to be able to regulate the types of businesses that are operating.
Again, though, it is on record that it is to prevent prostitution, and I think with that little bit of explanation, it's a nicer way to kind of say that we didn't mean to say it's to regulate prostitution, but it is. I'd also like to bring up that there are no escort licenses. Nobody has applied for an escort license. So if we have people acting unlawfully already with, without leases, cash-based businesses, what makes you think, you know, they're going to comply with, with this ordinance? It's really an undue burden just to massage therapists. And, and to answer William's question, you know, there were, how it's going to impact my business, there's also, like, aside from the other things, there's regulations on like a waiting room. A lot of times, we sublease from a chiropractor, an OT, a PT somewhere else where we don't have a waiting room, but we have a private room with a intake area, you know? And so those little things, that is regulating massage therapy. And it's regulating our ability to practice the way that the state sees fit. And so I think this interpretation is huge. You know, other states, we don't see this. When I talked to the council, they brought up Minneapolis. I had to bring, I had to mention to them that the state of Minneapolis is not state regulated. There were, there was another town. Appleton was brought up. I actually met with the rezoning commissioner and got the ordinance changed. So it's like, I knew right away that that was an incorrect statement. So I think from the beginning, from the get-go, like, now I've been talking to aldermen. I talked to the city council. I think you guys were all a little bit more educated.
Are you, you referring to the city attorney?
Uh, no, I, I did call the city council yesterday. I talked to a few of the aldermen.
This is, this is the city council.
The city attorney, the city legal, thank you. I did talk to a few aldermen, and I was able to kind of share these concerns as well. But overall, I think it's an interpretation, because when I first started talking to some of the aldermen, it was, I was under the impression, the reason, reason for this ordinance is to figure out who can provide disciplinary action to those who are pretending to be massage therapists and illegally providing illicit services. So for us as massage therapists, it's identity theft, it's insurance fraud. It puts the public at harm, you know? It's a much greater scope than just what a civil charge. It's, it's more of a criminal charge. Like, what would you do for other people that were impersonating a medical professional? Right? You would arrest them, and they would get charged for impersonating a medical professional. So, you know, that's why in 460.17, one and two, and A and B, that's why we have in, in 2019.
Alder Stevens?
What was the question?
Thank you.
Whether it enter?
Yeah. No, that's a fair point. I think we've gotten beyond that at this point. Yeah. I have a question. I was just curious if you are in contact with any massage therapists in Kenosha or Madison as communities that Attorney Bungart referenced?
Yes.
And curious how, how that's working down there.
Um, so I have someone here, Jeffrey, he can speak on that a little bit more as he was present in those council meetings. But again, it's very discriminatory because it, it groups our profession with prostitution, and it's like.
But I was, I was more curious if there are any problems that you've, or your colleagues have experienced with those ordinances?
Lots of problems.
Okay.
It's, it's a huge issue. People are relocating their businesses, and it's like, that's, you know, a potential here too. And it's like, if, every single city would be doing this if it was something that cities should be doing. And I think there's a reason that there's such a few amount of it, and I think because licensing is so new here, there's a lot that people just are misinformed about, as far as our SCOVA practice, as far as like the legitimacy, you know? And the license was supposed to help make us more credible, more valid, and, and yet here we are still facing the stereotype of prostitution.
Yeah, Alder Galvin?
After listening to Attorney Bungart's explanation and reading through, again, the, the proposed ordinance, it almost seems to me as if this is a means of the city protecting legitimate people who are licensed to give massages, in so much as you're not paying, again, another licensing fee. You're, you're paying a fee that allows us to look at your plans, the sites you're going to be at, and then you're listed, employees are listed. What we had was massage facilities popping up all over areas of our city, and they were illegal when we began to investigate. What this does is, if we start getting complaints, it allows us to say, no, these people are licensed, they're legitimate. These are the ones we're going to look at. We won't have these bad actors coming into town and setting up because they know they'll never get a license to open a, a practice at all. I mean, the more I'm listening to this, that's what I feel like. It's, it's, it's much like the liquor licenses. You know, we have good operators, we have bad operators, and we use the licensing where they have to have a licensed bartender on, on site, and these kind of things to, to separate the bad actors from the good actors. And I don't think we're trying to imply that, you know, it, what it is, is people are, are taking your reputation and, and ruining it by having illegitimate practices within communities. We're trying to find a way to allow you to practice and keep those bad actors out of our community.
Which, which I understand. I'm, I'm, we also do not want that. You know, that's why we helped lobby and, and write bills like 460.17, and I think that overall, like, those, those say that you can create an ordinance to stop these illicit services. Yes, the state license says you should do that. You should have law enforcement enact disciplinary measures. We are for that. The law already says you can do that, but this ordinance does in turn regulate massage therapy. It's an undue burden to our profession. So you were talking about the $75 fee, you know? Really, all you have to do, there's maybe at the most seven malpractice insurance companies for massage therapy. All you would have to do is have them send a list of people insured in your zip code, and you'll have a list. And that's from a third party. That's not from us giving it to you. And then if somebody, if you see an establishment that's not registered on the state website or doesn't have malpractice insurance, then they are practicing illegally. We have to have malpractice insurance. We have to have malpractice insurance in order to have a state license. So, if they're not coming up on the malpractice insurance, or when you do a license lookup, their address isn't there, it's automatic.
And that's what the seventy-five-dollar, we're not allowed to make money off of licensing. We're allowed to charge what it costs our employees to do the background checks and to make sure the people that are submitting an application have legitimate licenses, they have the insurance, that their buildings are set up the way they're supposed to be. So, we're only allowed to estimate what it costs our employees to do an average check. We're not allowed to make a profit off of it.
Right.
So, that's what the seventy-five-dollar fee is. It isn't a way to, like, stick it to you one more time.
I just, again, it's a duplicate service. The state says that we're legitimate people. Why does the city have to go and counteract and, like, not believe what the state is saying? The state is certifying us and licensing us. And so, it's like, you're going and doing the same thing. You're doing that same-
We're checking with the state to make sure the license is valid. I mean, someone could walk in with a false license, couldn't they? Could they walk in with a fabricated license?
And it's identity theft and malpractice-
Right, so, when they come in with that false license, we check it, we see if it's a valid license or not. And if it's not a valid license, then we take law enforcement action. This is how we help, you know, to make sure we have legitimate people operating within our community.
So, the state says you already have to do that. The state is already saying, you have to do that. And by our ordinance-
How are we supposed to do it if we don't have a means of having you come in with those licenses?
Because we have a license lookup that's public information. The same way with every other healthcare, any other healthcare license or regulation. It is so insulting that you group us with liquor licensing?
All right, are there additional questions from?
Sorry.
Alder Campbell?
License, I've been waiting. The whole business license thing in the city of Green Bay, whether you sell lemonade or whatever, let's not go there, but every business has to be a licensed business to operate in the city of Green Bay, period. You have to be state, you can't be a felon and get a liquor license. You can't be a felon and get a lot of things. The state regulates a lot of businesses. This is a different level. This is where we come in, and we're, I agree with Alder Galvin, we're trying to protect you. We're weeding out the places. We're trying to stop the cigarette sales from kids, and that's a federal license. But the city still has a responsibility, and there's a city council that govern and make the ordinances. We're just trying to protect. And by having you have a license, you're getting on board and saying, we're a good one. We want business in town.
Alder Campbell, is there a question?
Well, my question started with that, and I'm coming off of it. You know, I think it's, how do you think, and I don't want to call out any Alders, but surely, we're trying, I think you've heard, where, where do you think? I think you're grouping yourself, I'm just putting yourself here with your testimony, as being part of it. I'm not saying you're part of it. I don't know if anyone else here on the council is-
It's online, there's actually articles where aldermen are quoted saying it.
By the press?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have questions?
Well, that is the question, is how do you think you're grouped in?
Alder Hutchinson, go ahead.
So, for the establishment license, number one, initially, it's a leasing, right? Not the subleases. So, subleases are excluded. So, somebody could rent the establishment, report their employees, but then rent out ten other rooms that are then unregulated, because they're subleases. So, there's unregulated professions that look like massage. They have massage tables, they have beds, you know? It can be anything from Reiki to reflexology to-
We need to move on to other questions. Alder Hutchinson?
Okay, well, I'm reading the text that's proposed, and it does seem to me, and I guess, I don't know if you've read this text, like, revocation, suspension, and non-renewal of license. That seems to me to be a state thing. Why are we getting into that?
That applies to the massage establishment license, not the professional license. We are not regulating the professionals themselves, we are regulating the operation of the business.
Of the business license?
Correct. So, the revocation, non-renewal process, because we're granting, anytime you grant a permit or a license, you have to have, for due process considerations, you have to have a process, excuse me, to be able to appeal a denial or revocation. So, that is the denial, revocation, suspension, non-renewal of the establishment license. License in this, in the context of the ordinance, means the establishment license.
Thank you for that clarification. Totally get that.
Okay.
So, we're dealing with people who've already got a license, but we're aiming at everyone who doesn't have a license. So, that's my understanding. There's a lot of people working who not only don't have a business license, they don't have a massage license. They have nothing.
So, partially, partially correct. So, we already have the capability of issuing a citation for somebody practicing massage therapy without a license. We have an ordinance that codifies the state statute. What that gives us, the authority to do, is hand somebody a citation, potentially refer them to the state, but that's the extent of it. We have no control over shutting down a business that's employing, you know, however many individuals who are unlicensed. That's, we don't have any control over the business itself and how it operates within our city. That is the point of the ordinance, and that is what the ordinance does. The state law actually-
Ma'am?
Okay, I guess, thank you for that clarification, but I can see the point. If I have a license and I'm doing everything legal, that I'm falling into this, I have to license, get another license for the city, and then the verbiage is how we're going to deal with people who miss work with their license. You know, we're going to go after them.
Right, so, the verbiage is, is that if you operate a massage establishment, so, if you operate a massage business, not that you perform massage therapy, but if you have a massage business as defined under the ordinance, you are then guilty of, or in violation of our ordinance. And you can either be fined and/or, if you continue, you can be deemed to be a public nuisance, and then the city has the ability to be able to shut down the business, essentially, by deeming it a public nuisance to the community. So, we're not going after the individual with the license as far as their professional licensure. We would be going after the business and getting the business to be compliant with our ordinance.
Okay, um, thank you. Any other questions for our guests before we move on to other speakers? All right. Alder Campbell?
Do you pay personal property tax on your business in the city of Green Bay?
Um-
To operate in the city of Green Bay?
We, I pay self-employment taxes and-
Personal property taxes was a question?
No.
Every other business in the city of Green Bay pays personal property taxes for operating their equipment and their cash register and their TV and everything?
I don't have a cash register or equipment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, Stacy Barden?
My name is Stacy Barden. I am a new therapist in the state of Wisconsin. I've been a therapist for twenty-seven years.
Your address, ma'am?
Crevis, Wisconsin. I came from Illinois. I had a practice, a corporation of massage therapists, and I was the lead therapist for twenty-four years. I have been licensed for, since twenty, two thousand and eight. Because before that, we had no licensing in Illinois. But I became a massage therapist in nineteen ninety-six. I am highly educated and highly skilled as a massage therapist. I work with oncology patients. I work with children with cancer that came to my office without their parents, because they knew who I was. All of my therapists were vetted, we are all licensed, we are all insured. We never, ever had to deal with such an ordinance. However, in our community, we had a business license, a simple identification business license. If anything, I would implore you to look at that idea. If you already have business licenses in Green Bay, then all you need to do is ask a massage therapy business to pay a simple fee and register as a business. Simple, nothing difficult. This ramification and telling us how we have to have so many sheets, we already know that. How much square footage we need to have, what the table has to be made of? Hello, COVID changed the games for everybody. We already know how to disinfect. We want to disinfect. We don't want to ever be accused of inappropriate behavior on any level. Please retract and reconsider. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Any questions? All right, Jessica Gilbert? Okay, Stephanie Sarda? Oh, oh, got it, very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jamie Elmer?
Jamie Emmer, fourteen, twenty-two, fourteenth Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I know that you all have put a lot of work and effort into this, and I think what we're all trying to say is the same thing. We do want the same thing that you do. We, we want those illegitimate places to not be an issue any longer. I think one of the issues is you keep comparing us to a liquor license. And the last time I checked, and you can definitely correct me, but I think liquor license is going to be under, like, hospitality and maybe service industry. And I just would like to implore you to realize that we are truly medical health professionals. We are governed under the state of Wisconsin by the medical board. So, you have said a couple times that you can't put an imposition onto a medical professional, but we are a liquor license, and I know that you guys are just using that, but I just, I really want to kind of hit it home, that a liquor license doesn't need six hundred hours of education, malpractice insurance, background check, continuing education, and we also have to take a state laws exam. So, we all know what the state laws are. We also need to take a national board exams, which is not an easy exam. I can definitely tell you that. We have to have twenty-four hours of continuing ed, and due to the nature of our business, which we understand, like, we've all been in this, we've had illicit questions constantly. We get inappropriate questions, we get inappropriate pictures sent to us at times. Ethics is a huge component of massage therapy, and most massage therapists really do want the same thing that you do. We just don't want to be grouped into that same thing. So, in that ordinance, it says that the, I believe it says something about the massage therapist not exposing themselves. So, you can't say that this has nothing to do with prostitution and lumping us with sex workers, when that's absolutely what is happening. What licensed professional has been cited in the Green Bay area? I think we all can agree, there probably isn't any. Chiropractors are not under this ordinance. PTs, OTs, doctors, nurses, all of that. So, it does feel like we're being targeted, and I think that's why we're kind of like, enough is enough. So, we would just ask that you reconsider, look at us. I know that, I think you said that you've been working on this for two years. It's unfortunate that we, as a profession, just found out about two months ago. We can help you. We can help you work at this. We can help you try to figure out how to do what you're trying to do and what you're trying to accomplish in the city, because obviously, we all want that. But we just are asking you that you exempt licensed massage therapists in your ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any questions? All right, thank you. Any others in the audience who'd like to speak? If so, just approach the podium, state your name and address.
I am Dr. Jeff Montoya. I actually live in Milwaukee, but I am a leader in several of our massage organizations in Wisconsin. And in two thousand and nineteen, I actually worked very closely with our legislature in revising our state statutes for Act forty-one, which was signed into law by Governor Evers, that allows for local ordinances to be established to prevent the unlicensed practice of massage therapy. We were very careful in crafting that legislation, that we wanted it to not affect our license holders but only affect those who are operating without a license. Honestly, I was involved in trying to get Kenosha to change their mind in their awful ordinance, which your ordinance really models. I am part of the organization of licensed massage therapists in the United States, and they have been doing a study, and what they have found is there is no difference in communities that have establishment license versus communities that do not have establishment license and just follow the state law. So, these licenses really just put a burden, an extra fee, extra steps, extra stress, as you've heard from my fellow therapists, on the license holders who are following the law and doing things legally. I do also operate a massage school. I have campuses in, West Dallas is my main one, which I actually moved out of Milwaukee, because they have an establishment license, and I'm like, I am not going to be subject to that. So, I just moved down the way to West Dallas with my school. My school's also in Door County. The Dells, our closest one, is Manitowoc. And I would not do a school here in Green Bay with knowing that my graduates wouldn't be subject to this type of ordinance. It is not helpful for the profession, and it's insulting to us as license holders, licensed under the Medical Examining Board of the State. Thank you.
Alder, yes?
You said you worked with the state-
Yes.
-to create statutes that allow us to create ordinances?
Yes.
Okay, so, do you have a model ordinance that you could give our law department to look at?
You know, when we worked with the state, we actually started working with the legal municipalities to try to develop one, and it kind of lost steam. The best example I can give you is actually when West Dallas was looking at creating an ordinance. They actually started with one that was very similar to what you guys started with here. And because my office is there, I got on the phone with the city attorney and with the mayor and was like, this is not going to fly, this is horrible. And they did like a one-sentence ordinance that basically just said in the city that there could be fines and penalties in accordance with what's allowed in state statutes for the unlicensed practice of massage therapy. And Representative Sam Filippo, who, that's his district from the assembly, I mean, he's been quoted in, like, newspaper articles and TV interviews, because he's like, my state bill, which turned into Act forty-one, has helped us shut down some of the places that they were trying to shut down. And so, I would suggest a very simple ordinance that just says it is unlawful to practice massage or bodywork therapy without a license and what those penalties are, rather than something that gives legitimate license holders more hoops and more fees to go through. So, I think it's kind of a different direction, but very simple. I can see if I could dig up what the West Dallas one, but like I said, it was like one sentence. It was not complicated at all.
You don't see a problem with that, that then if, that's what we have, is one sentence, it's against the law, to practice massage therapy without being licensed? And then when we get a complaint, that means the police are going to go to your establishment, and they're going to walk in, and they're going to have to check everyone's to make sure they've got a license?
Yes, and so-
And you're okay with that?
Yes, and our statutes actually say that we need to publicly display our license. We already do that. If the police called me and said there was a complaint, I'd be more than delighted to work with them and try to come to the-
I doubt very much they're going to call you and let you know they're on the way. They're probably going to come there and investigate. So, I mean, this is the thing I think this ordinance potentially avoids is something like that happening.
I don't- Have any of us, who is a massage therapist here?
We have nothing.
Has anyone ever had the police come to their office?
I called them to harass a client who made it-
Okay. Who has called the police? All right, who has the police come uninvited because of the complaint that they called?
I worked on the chief of police in our town as a client.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alder Burnett?
Sir, thank you for being here. Just doing a little Google research as some of you are speaking regarding this prostitution accusation, like, you don't want to be lumped in with places that solicit or allow prostitution or push prostitution. I'm not sure the right term to use. But in your history and your experience, would you say that there is some evidence to suggest that massage parlors nationwide are fronts for prostitution and human trafficking?
So, all right, so, let me, actually, you may- So, all right, so let me, um, actually you may have used the right term. So in our profession, there are a lot of triggers for us. So one of the triggers is the term massage parlor, because that is seen as a place where prostitution is happy. People go for happy endings. And so the work that we do, we don't, we don't like to be lumped in with that or that term-
Call massage therapist.
Right, because we're massage therapists. We're a health profession. But there are, I mean, we see like, who was the football coach? Robert Kraft in Florida. So there are often, I shouldn't say often, there are sometimes illegitimate businesses that masquerade as massage. And we mentioned, we don't like that either. But those are places where criminal activity is happening. And so it doesn't need, uh, to register, you don't need to regulate massage. You need to just enforce the criminal code that already exists. Um, I would say of the, you know, there are, um, there are almost 5,000 licensed massage therapists in the state of Wisconsin, probably about 4,300, 4,400 after COVID. Um, the numbers went down a little bit. When we look at how many of these illicit businesses there are, there are not a ton of them. I mean, they're sensational, people get attention. Um, when Senator, uh, when Representative Sam Filippo was worried in West Dallas, there were, when we had honest conversations, there were two businesses that everyone knew where they were, what they did, and that he was like, we got to shut down these businesses. Well, we found out that there are like two dozen legitimate massage businesses in the city. And it's just this small percentage of bad actors, just like there are in any profession. So I would say, you know, that are there those type of massage parlors or illicit businesses? I don't even like to call them massage businesses because they're doing illicit things. Yes, but I don't know that this ordinance is going to, as it is written now, it's going to help you get there or prevent that. I think you're just going to create a bunch of hoops for license holders who are legitimate. And just to add, like, we've mentioned business licenses and all of those type of things. We are more than willing to get a business license and to comply with the rules for a business license. We just don't want to be targeted in a way unique because of massage. So if you have a license that chiropractors get and physical therapists get and physicians and dentists get, we will happily get that license. But we just don't want to get a license that says massage on it because you're trying to shut down bad places. Go after the bad places. Don't go after us.
How would you recommend we go after the bad places, short of an ordinance?
Um, that, I am not a law enforcement expert. Um, we do, actually, our massage organization has, uh, lobbyists that we use. He is also the lobbyist for, um, some law enforcement organizations. And we have had some conversations, um, with that. We, I don't really have the answer to that. I think an ordinance that says it is illegal to do massage without a license, an ordinance that says all of these other things, um, like human trafficking, prostitution, or whatever you're going after, uh, taking away business licenses, as was mentioned earlier, just, I don't think you have to target us on this work.
All right, thank you. Just a quick question for Commander Warwick. Um, you know, because I think we do have some of this language that the gentleman's referring to. And, you know, the question is, why don't you just enforce the law? Could you just explain, you know, why this ordinance might be helpful in, in prohibiting illicit practices?
Yep, and, and I'm going to just use some of your comments, sir. Um, first, we don't target anybody. Um, and what, when we talked about this originally, Attorney Bungar talked about, we're focusing on the business. And how do you, how do you go after a bad place? And right now, we could, we could do compliance checks on massage therapists right now. Well, not, oh, tomorrow. All right? And we could see if that, they have their, um, their license. And then if they didn't, then we would, uh, issue the, uh, the citation that Attorney Bungar had talked about. So, but what happens if we went there three times and there were three different people that had different licenses? So that goes to your question, how do you, what do you do with that bad business? To what, to your point, Alder, right? And then the ordinance, getting to the mayor's comments, the ordinance ties, uh, brings this all together. They're separate, but they're together. They're separate because the ordinance focuses on the business, right? You want the business plan. We want the business plan. But the ordinance, these are my words, the ordinance brings it together because we want to focus, and it comes down to the focus, right? We get a lot of complaints of, for example, the appearance of some of these, um, locations. And the, and the appearance really causes a lot of fear and anxiety. And I do agree with you that people unfairly probably put you in categories that you don't want to be in, right? The data supports that that does not occur. The data that we've run about the stuff that you've talked about, human trafficking and, and prostitution, that data does not support the problems at these locations. But it goes back to what are we going to do and how is this ordinance going to apply? The ordinance is focused on the business. From a law enforcement perspective, again, I'll go on record and say, we, we don't write the ordinances. We'll support whatever council does. But from the law enforcement perspective, we bring, this brings it together because then if we get multiple complaints, if we get complaints regarding the appearance, whether it's whatever complaint, we have an avenue to investigate it. So we don't have to go back there repeatedly and try to solve the problem and just basically spin our wheels. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yeah, I think so. Any other question, Alder Stoyer?
Is it Dr.?
Yes.
Just, Dr., thank you for coming in. You know, we've been working on this, I don't know, for several years now. And I, I don't, speaking for myself, I don't think there's any ill intent, uh, that we were trying to come forward against legitimate businesses that you talk, you talk about. We, we are, we represent about 4,000 citizens in our district. And in our areas, there's some areas on, on the west side per se where business owners or people will call and complain about the shady things that are going on. It's hurting their businesses as well. So we're, we're answering to places that will show up and then maybe three weeks later, they'll be somewhere else. Or lights are on at midnight and people feel unsafe in, in an area. So, you know, I've, I have friends that are massage therapists. I mean, told, you know, we're not, I'm not throwing any disparaging remarks at your industry whatsoever. I think it's very important, it's very well needed. It's just that we are answering complaints from businesses that are losing business because these places are existing. And they, they'll be there for a day, maybe a day, a week, a month, and then they go away and then they pop up again. So we're just trying to figure out a way to do that. And another follow-up question is that everybody here is very well spoken on this matter. And obviously you've done a lot of research and worked with a lot of different governments on that. I'm just kind of surprised that, that you folks didn't come forward maybe earlier.
We didn't know about-
Well, okay. All right, that's fine, that's fine. I accept that.
Yeah, nobody asked that.
All right, thank you. Um, so, what's that? Yeah, so that's it, you know, really. I mean, that's about all I had to say for that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Hello, my name is Diane Mencheski. I live at 1915 Hillside Lane in Green Bay. And I just have some questions for the city council in regards to, um, the ordinances that are in place. We currently have an ordinance, um, number 3420. And that's relating to the practice of massage and bodywork therapy requiring state license. Are you all familiar with that? I counted several aldermen and asked them to look that up and, because I had some questions regarding it. So this is, this is-
Council doesn't answer questions of folks who are addressing the council?
I didn't.
But yeah, just feel free to make your-
So basically, this is a one-page ordinance right now, um, that the city has about massage therapy licensing. And, um, if an establishment has advertising in the window, in the window that says that they are a massage business, the person must show their license that they have a Wisconsin license to practice massage. How is this being enforced right now? Because there are several, several establishments on military that have massage, um, signs. Who's going in to check to make sure that they have their license? Okay, you can't answer questions, sorry. Um, now we're proposing another ordinance, or the city is, a new one, and that's 11 pages long. This is only one page, and this is relating to the establishment, massage establishment. The things in here, it's, there's just a lot. If you can't enforce this ordinance, how are you going to enforce this one? So that's, that's, um, all I have to say.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, Alder Morgan?
Do you have, because when you called me, I wrote down one and I called legal. That wasn't the right number.
Okay. On the top, it just says general ordinance number 34 dash 20.
1094, okay, that's what I, the only thing I could find.
That's essentially the question that I asked Commander Warwick.
Right, but it, it's that simple. Um, so we pay an annual fee. The proposed new ordinance is saying that we'll pay an annual fee of $75. That's going to list the current therapist in that establishment that day that you fill out that application. Multiple, um, therapists will probably be coming in and out. So those licenses, those therapists in some of those establishments are not going to be the same. So I know that there was a, there was a concern, well, we don't have the time to go in and, and check these licenses. I don't know if I'm clear on that, but that was the, that was what the police officer said. Well, we don't have time to go in and, and, and check all these licenses. Well, I guess I'm not sure how an application that's filled out once a year is going to solve that problem.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Other testimony? If not?
There was one other thing I forgot to mention. We do have a petition and-
Go ahead.
Stephanie Sianda. Um, we do also have a petition with 433 signatures. Um, that is also for the city, um, not trying to impose on state regulations. So, um, I can send that to you guys if you'd like, but, um-
Thank you. All right, a motion to close the floor?
Hi there, I'm Phil Turnbull, 2480 Marina Circle. I think sitting and observing the political process has been both frustrating and a little bit concerning because what we've heard in multiple times is that you're clearly identifying two different groups, licensed and legitimate businesses and those that are illegitimate. So I guess I can ask a rhetorical question to all of you to say, do you not have rules, regulations, laws, ordinance that currently tackle things like human trafficking, illicit sexual services, prostitution? And why haven't those services been targeted? Or why can't you prosecute those people at this current point? So I think from our standpoint, we're asking that you take a moment to think about that. Look at the ordinances that you're looking to put in place because they will truly affect the businesses, uh, small business owners, legitimate licensed professionals. So even the simplest statement to say, we've got an individual who's a sole proprietor, owns a business that has one room. The one room does not meet the current ordinances. So they come to apply for a license and they get denied. So they step back and go, okay, I can no longer operate my business because I don't have the right square footage. I don't have a designated waiting room area. And now I can't operate under the guidelines or the ordinances. So I'm going to step out. I either have to close my doors, look for another space. More square, more square footage means more money. Or as a lot of individuals have already stated, I'm going to step outside of the Green Bay area. So simply stated, we ask you to look at what's currently law, what's currently considered illegal. Look to see why or why not that these individuals have not been prosecuted already because we've already identified and it's been mentioned on multiple times that you're not targeting licensed massage therapists. You're going after illegitimate businesses. So if what they're doing is, well, currently illegal, you should have grounds to prosecute. If you get a complaint about sexual services, you should be able to go in and prosecute. The question is, why can't you? So why is it going to take a building inspector to walk in, issue a $500 fine, slap on the wrist, they shift, move their positions, they move down the street a little bit, or they go into a different, different area, or they move into a different community? So we're asking you to just take a look at your definitions, take a look at the wordings that you're currently using, how you're identifying us as legitimate businesses in comparison to the illegitimate business. Look to make an exemption to say those licensed individuals do not fall under the same category as these illegitimate businesses. In current or past council meetings, we were looking at the definitions that stated. So it was interesting within the wording where we talk about medical professionals being doctors, surgeons, nurse practitioners, physical therapists, PTAs, and then all of a sudden it stops. And then if you go into the state definitions, massage therapists are included in the same definition as healthcare providers. In your definitions, we're now taverns. We're being compared to liquor licenses. We're no longer medical professionals. So when we come up here and we show passion, it's because this is who we are and this is what we do. We take offense to somebody saying we're now sex workers or being grouped as prostitutes. So from that standpoint, we're asking you to take a step back, pull this, create a task force or a committee, allow us to help you create an ordinance that's going to be good for both of us. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions?
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, floor is closed. Um, is there a motion on the floor? Alder Galvin makes a motion to refer this item back to the Protection and Policy Committee. Is there a second for that? Alder Stoyer? Discussion? Alder Burnett?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a question for the law department. You've kind of worked on this quite a bit. We've had outside council work on this, your team of attorneys have worked on it. It's been a protection policy, policy several times, been here now. I mean, are you in favor or what would you do if we sent this back to the committee? Would you work with the committee to alter this? I guess Alder, maybe, let me just back up. Alder Galvin, what are you looking to accomplish by sending it back to the committee? Ford Law answers that.
Well, I, I, you know, I listened to a lot of conversation here. Um, as you could tell, I didn't necessarily agree with a lot of what was being said at times. Um, but I still think with some input from some individuals here, I think maybe we could craft something that is better. And, uh, if we can do that, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. So I, I'm just asking the committee or staff to take another look at this. Um, consider some of the input from some of the individuals that, that spoke and see if we can do better.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. Attorney Bungar, I mean, how would you respond to that? Is this something that could be revised again?
Sure. We're, we're more than happy to, to, you know, to listen to additional input. Again, this was a draft that was, that was produced not at the, not at the request of administration, but, but listening to the concerns of alders as to, um, you know, businesses and, and problems that, that are occurring in their community. And this was a mechanism by which, um, the city would be able to potentially curtail some of the problems that have been popping up in certain neighborhoods. Um, so ultimately, it's up to the discretion of council. Um, but I think the, the larger decision is essentially i- if council wants to regulate this or doesn't want to regulate this. Um, because if we continue paring it down, if, if essentially we're not going to have an ordinance, um, that's going to be effective in any way. Um, I, and I understand, you know, the, the exemption, um, section with respect to, um, other medical fields, um, but i- i- if we keep adding exemptions, with there, there's not going to be much to enforce. Um, it, that's essentially where, where the ordinance draft is, is at. But, you know, if, if the alders wish to discuss it a little bit further at committee, um, we can have staff present and we can, you know, also bring it back to our outside council who, who drafted this initially. Um, we kind of just did some, some cleanup and some tweaking um, with respect to feedback that we got from, from other department heads and, and from the alders. Um, but essentially it's up to you whether, as a body, as to whether you want to regulate this or not.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Bungar. That's all.
Okay. Other comments on the motion? Uh, Alder Morgan?
First of all, I'd like to say I'm on the protection and policy. So I was in these- meetings, and I feel bad if you think we were targeting you, but in a lot of ways, we never really said that we think you are people doing stuff illegal. I think what you heard a lot of times is actually vocabulary that came from citizens that complained, and they wanted to speak, we opened it up, and more often than none, it was them using verbiage that may be offending you. I think at the point, we tried to explain to everybody, we want to do is to protect you, the legitimate licensed masseuse. I know we said it more than once a night, when we talked that night, and different alders mentioned that. And in my history, I was a policeman for forty-one years. Miming, we had complaints about it, but it was, and it was, some of it was on the streets we're talking about that aren't even in the village, are in the city of Green Bay, they were in villages and stuff down the road from where some of you mentioned. And it was maybe not a masseuse, it was a model or someone doing something illegal that was supposed to be modeling lingerie or something like that. But we also had a lot of trouble with pop-up salons and stuff, you know, motels, or just someone rents a building for a couple months. So I feel that we are trying to make this legitimate, we're not targeting you. As we said in the committee, you guys can still go and do a massage or your therapy to anyone that needs special needs, you can go to their house and do it, you can go to Lambeau Field, do all the football players. We're not regulating any of that, we are just trying to regulate the building that you're doing your job in. And I'm sorry, like I say, I, none of us had the intentions of offending you, and we respect... The, the stuff I heard, I told people, "I can't believe how much training and how you knew about the different muscles and stuff like that, it was amazing." I, I congratulate you for being so well-trained, but believe me, we're not after you. We just want to protect the people that are going to the illegal, illegitimate people. Thank you.
Alder Grant?
I have more of a question for staff. Commander Warwick, I don't want to speak on behalf of your department, but I know I've met with a detective with the Green Bay Police, and we just talked about issues that the city is facing, and, you know, what issue, or even just problems that the police department faces when it comes to prosecuting. I know, you know, a massage therapist said, "Why can't we prosecute?" And I know one thing he mentioned was, when it comes time to go on record, people withdraw. They're not willing to put themselves out there for accidentally, or, you know, having something bad happen to them. Is there anything else you can elaborate? Why can't we prosecute, or any issues or complications that you're facing as a department, and how this would help curtail that?
The, in speaking with that detective, he, he did express those same concerns to me when I was preparing for this evening's meeting. He, he wanted to reiterate that, you know, the problem is the location, and in the, in the area, in the neighborhoods, in the business districts, and the problem's focusing on appearance, and he liked the fact that if there was a business plan or an ordinance to support the lighting or the cameras, that does give the opportunity for the department to investigate it, and to stop that criminal activity from occurring, if it is occurring. And if it does occur, then we have as a city some avenues to explore, you know, putting the massage therapists aside, and really focusing on the location to remove that problem out of that neighborhood.
Okay, and then I just, I guess, I don't know, sorry, Bungert, I'm sorry, I did ask Attorney Kocher about this. With an ordinance, I know, you know, if there's an inspection issue within a neighborhood, you can report that anonymously. Would this ordinance have an anonymous avenue for complaints?
Correct. Essentially, it would operate just like any other kind of inspections complaint that, that can be submitted anonymously, which then would spur inspection either by our inspectors from, from Community Economic Development, or by the police department.
Okay, so I think just a point I'm trying to guess, get with that, or make with that is, if we have a current issue of people being willing to come forward and go on record, now they have a safe way to make a complaint, and we may know about more activity that we didn't know about before. So, thank you.
Any other comments on the referral motion? Alder Ech.
And I, I want to make it clear too, this is, it, it, it's not targeted towards massage therapists, it's, it's the business of the massage, the establishment that we're, it's focusing on that. Yes, there's an ordinance specifically on the, the massage therapist, but this is specifically on the business of massage therapy, and it does give us an avenue to fine or, you know, give citations to those that are not following these regulations. And it would be, as like you said, it would be going to the inspection department, and they would be able to report it in that anonymous way, and also take the burden off of the police department in that way.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this has been, we worked on for a number of years now, I think Attorney Bungert, you know, I kind of explained that, Alder Stewart, you kind of kicked it off in the beginning, and then I handled it for a while, now Alders Grant and Eck, you know, we've all kind of teamed up. We had some staffing challenges there for a while, and we had a number of ordinances that need to be rewritten, so we were working through that, which is why it's taken so long. True or false, I don't know, let's yes, no, but Commander Warwick or Attorney Bungert, currently we have no ability to shut down a bad actor business? Is that, is that true?
Yep, so our, our, our current ability, by codifying the state statute that at least, which we did a few years back as like a first step, which a lot of the speakers mentioned, that, that does, that allows us to basically issue a citation, but it doesn't give us, it doesn't grant us then any kind of regulatory authority to be able to go after the establishment, or to go after the owner of the business, or, or hold the, the business owner accountable for violations that are transpiring on the premise.
Okay, thank you, and that's, that's what I had been told, because when I first, kind of, when we redid some of the districts, and I inherited some of Military Avenue, and heard some of the things that were going on, and I reported and said, "Hey, let's, you know, work on shutting them down," and we were told, "We can't." And infuriating, it was infuriating and maddening, and how do you tell that to, to residents? "Well, we can't shut them down, sorry, sorry," you know, maybe sometime, but that's when we started working on the ordinance, and it's taken way longer than any of us wanted. But there was a point, there was a reason for it, I mean, human trafficking and prostitution, nobody's saying that massage therapists, gosh, they're the sole purpose, I mean, when I was a mailman for, for eight years, I probably visited them a hundred times, they're, they're wonder workers, honestly, I pulled so many muscles and strained so many things, they're amazing what they can do. It's, we're not combining those two, we're actually, like you said, I think, protecting them. It's showing you have a great service, these other ones are the ones we're after, and this is the way we're doing it. Yes, I, I don't see a reason right now to send it back, I think we should approve this today. If we want to tweak some things down the line, I know we've said this over and over, and Alder Scannell has said it, we've had ordinances that we put in place to get it going, and then we tweak it, we do that with all of our ordinances, we find something that maybe isn't right, and then we change it. I think right now, we've put so much effort into this, that I think we should move ahead with it. Thanks.
Just one, one point for our audience, and, you know, alders know this, but this is just the first reading for this ordinance, it requires two readings. We're not suspending the rules or adopting it at this meeting, so no matter what happens, even if we were to move forward with this ordinance, it would be back on the agenda the next time we meet. So just, just so everybody's aware of that. Alder Scannell?
Yeah, I think, I wish I would have asked one question of everyone who's up here, because I never, I got the feeling from most of them that they have not read the ordinance. I keep hearing things, they listen, they, they listen...
Yes, sir.
Alder Scannell, go ahead.
The impression I've gotten is they've, they've taken conversations, things we've said, and it, for example, the last gentleman who spoke, he talked about a list of, we list healthcare professionals, but not therapists, but I see nothing like that in the code, we don't list anybody. I'm not sure... Well, let's just cut to the chase, as Alder Weary said. We have had a long history in this city where we've had these illicit businesses, we do enforcement, that, that activity goes down, but then it's like a roller coaster, it comes back up, and it's always based on, we can't get a handle on the establishment. It's not just the illegal activity, it's the establishment, and this is what this is intended to do. Is it onerous for bona fide professionals? Yes. We're charging you a, a small fee, seven-five dollars a year, I don't think that's too onerous. We are asking you to come forward with plans and everything, yes, that, unfortunately, we have to, to make this ordinance, that has to be part of the, you have to help us, you have to help us catch these illicit businesses by participating in this. And again, if we enact this, and it negatively affects your business somehow, you can come to us and we can then address that in the, in amendments. I don't know why not. If you're being negatively affected in a part of the code, that could be brought forward, and we could address that. So this has been an issue for the city a long time, our businesses are being hurt by these other businesses, I think your profession is being hurt by these other businesses, and I, I don't, I don't know what we would do if we kicked this back to committee. If...
Sir, I retort to you, if you would read our statute...
Can we, can we please, can we please? Ma'am? Ma'am, you need to refrain from offering comments from the gallery.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I don't know what we would do differently if we referred this back to committee. I don't know what more we can do with what we have. So I, I would like to just get the ball rolling here, we still have another reading to go through, which still gives more time for community input if they're seeing, if they read the, if there's, they can show us specific things in the ordinance that are gonna be problematical. They mentioned that there has some, just rent a room. Well, that room's in a building, that building must have some area that could be used as a waiting room, the only requirement we're making is that it has access to an exit, a hallway could serve as a waiting room if it has that access. I mean, there are ways to work around this, I truly believe, and we need to do something to start grabbing a hold of this problem, and I, I just don't see referring it back, doing anything more than kicking the ball around and fumbling the ball around, and we're gonna end up pretty much at the same spot, unless, I mean, we've got a month now for, or two weeks, next committee meeting, two weeks? You know, if people could read through the ordinance and come forward with specific things they'd like to see changed, we can still, we still got time. So I, I don't support sending it back, I support, let's, let's pass this now, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Stewart?
Thank you, Your Honor. Alder Galvin brought up some good points, and I, I feel the same way, I mean, I, I kind of came into the meeting tonight thinking, "Wow, this, this should be a slam dunk," but obviously, a lot of folks have come up and spoke very well, by the way, thank you. So with that being said, I think one reason that I would see it being referred back to committees, these folks that were out in the audience, that have their expertise in different areas, if they could come forward and share that with us, I think that would be a good compromise. So that's one reason I'm, I'm looking to have it brought back. So the people in the audience, you spoke well tonight, and I'd like you to do that again, and hopefully work with us and help us to get a ordinance that'll be beneficial to all. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Hutchinson?
I'm in favor of sending this back also. I have not spent a lot of time on this issue, it's my first year and a half as an alder. I haven't been approached other than out on the street by individuals every now and then about the issue in general. I think there's been a lot of good information provided tonight, and if we just blow by that, I don't think that's responsible. I mean, I know people have worked on this for years, and I think we want to get it right, and I think by just bullying this forward, it's not gonna help us get it right fast. I think if we send it back, and then we do get recommendations from those who are here who, or who have input for that next committee meeting, that would be very, very helpful in refining what we have, because it sounds to me like we have something, it might help our police department, but it doesn't really help those in the field. So there's a disconnect, it's a disconnect. So I'm highly in favor of sending it back. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? All right, this is the motion to refer this item back to committee, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alder Weary's requested a board vote. Again, this is the motion to refer to PNP.
You may vote.
This is a motion to refer. This, this is actually, it's actually referral. Change of motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Any final comments? Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate the comments. One thing I learned is, don't refer to legitimate massage therapists as massage parlors, that was something that I didn't mean to ta-to offend the group assembled here, but that word's in our vernacular, in our culture, it's what people call to explain some of these seedy places that we see throughout our town and throughout other parts of the country, in bigger cities. And there, and I, I don't want the council to feel like, for us to believe that it is possible that it, there is prostitution and human trafficking that does go through some of these less reputable places, that that is happening. That is, I mean, I just did a, a simple Google search, just in Wisconsin, April third, two, and again, no offense to the group assembled here, I'm gonna use the word parlor, because that's what the media reports as. April third, two thousand and fifteen, prostitution bust at massage parlor in DePere. November third, two thousand and twenty-two, WBAY, police investigate possible human trafficking at Oshkosh Massage Parlor. January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, just six months ago, WBAY, Eau Claire Massage Parlor owner guilty of keeping place of prostitution. The owner of two former massage parlors busted for human trafficking and prostitution is sentenced in Eau Claire County Court today. October eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Razor, Wisconsin, that's the media outlet, Appleton Police and the Outagamy County Sheriff's Department worked together on a prostitution sting at massage parlors. They shut down six of them over the past six months. So I don't know the, the, the solution other than trying to crack down on some of these non-unreputable places that are truly victimizing or perhaps running prostitution. And right now, as we debate and kind of hear legitimate concerns from some of the reputable, all reputable people that take their profession very seriously, the people that are running these sick places that are possibly victimizing people in our city are laughing, because this is yet another tool the city does not have to combat them and to, quite frankly, save lives and, and help people out of really perverse situations. So I, we mean no offense, I mean, I think that several of the speakers keep saying, you know, "You're comparing us to prostitution." That's very unfortunate if that's the impression. I know, I, I speak extemporaneous as a council member, I, I speak without any script, so sometimes the words that we use and the way we phrase things is clumsy, it's just because we're not perfect, and we're trying to understand, and we're trying to use our words to reason through issues, and so when we're trying to articulate our positions, we could say things like prostitution, we could say things like human trafficking, we're not accusing them of doing it, we're acknowledging the fact that it actually is happening throughout our state, and the fact that it could be happening in Green Bay, we need to give the police department, we need to give the Law Department the tools and enable to enforce ordinances to drive these places out of existence in Green Bay. So I, I do appreciate what they're saying, I do think we have another reading, so if they can come to us with the changes that they seek to, to revise our ordinance at that meeting, then maybe we can reconsider it and send it back at that point. that meeting, then maybe we can reconsider it and send it back at that point. But as of today, I'm in support of this ordinance.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Campbell and then Scannell?
Just to go off Alder Burnett's thing, I'm sure by now since the 4th of July, everyone has seen The Sound of Freedom and it really strikes home and it should strike a lot of tears and it's reality. And it is happening in our city. And I was just going to ask Commander Warwick what it is, but all of us Alders, taking on responsibility of making this town great and keeping it great is, is got to be one of the top priorities. And if we save one person's life, unfortunately, it gets tagged along with all this. If we save one person's life and this comes through and the thing at the end of the movie, if you haven't seen it, and I hope everyone has, you should go see it. Because I think you take a look at what it's really about and as an Alder, I found out that it does go on. It does go on in every neighborhood. It does go on in every district in the city of Green Bay. And thanks for backing that up, Alder. Like I said, I'm just going to go back to, and that the movie says it, if it saves one life, this is all well worth it.
Thanks. Alder Scannell?
Yes, I'd just like to add that one thing I'm hoping to see from this ordinance is that not only we're cleaning up, but that once we've got it cleaned up, we stay clean. That these illicit businesses are not going to make it through the permitting process. That's the purpose. And that's why we need you to help, your cooperation, to go through the permitting process. Because we will catch them and get them out. And they will no longer be associated with your business. So that's it. I'm tired.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Stewart? Yeah? No? All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it and that ordinance has been advanced. What's that? Another, another board vote? Uh, yes, we can do that. This is advancing.
Approved.
Oh, yeah, approved. Sorry, this is, no, I'm sorry, this is not actually on the ordinance. This is just approval of the item. So we still have to do the ordinance, but yeah, this is, this is approval. Yep. Correct. No, this is approval. Sit up?
No. Mr. Scannell?
I'm clicking.
What's your vote?
Yeah. Right here.
Hold on a second.
Uh, what's your?
Uh, he's got it.
Yes.
Okay. So that is approved.
Yep.
Eight to three? Okay. Eight to three. Now we're on to ordinances, first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Are folks all right with suspending the rules on that? Motion to suspend the rules. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. That's to take up these ordinances with one rule called vote. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Rules are suspended. Entertained a motion? Motion to advance, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify, so, but that was except for. For the, the one that was sent back, right? The, isn't 436 South Monroe?
Uh, no.
The one that we referred back? I just want to make sure.
That was a resolution. You're talking about 401.
Okay. All right, just, yeah, there's so many Monroe's here.
Yeah. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it and those ordinances are advanced to second and final reading. Positions and communications?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.